The Custer County Board of County Commissioners meeting will come to order. Let the record show today is March 29, 2019. The time is 9:00 AM. I've asked Ms. Mary Ellen Lasage if she would do the honor of leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and your product, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you ma'am, we appreciate that. Good morning everyone, welcome. Madam Secretary, will you call the roll please? Sorry, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, I will do that. Commissioner Flowers.
Present.
Commissioner Candace.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Here.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly Camper, present.
Thank you ma'am, I almost think, you know, round of applause after you say attorney, but, I don't know, I just wanted to go, "Yeah!"
Nice tie Clint.
Throw money please.
Throw money.
That's what we respond to.
That is what we respond to.
You know, it was so cold the other day Clint had his pot hands in his own pocket.
That's so cold.
Yeah, I know.
Dare we get started on that?
I can match you.
Now top that one, I know you can.
I've got a whole book of them right here.
Wayne Ruttering would say, "Well, at least it's clean."
Yeah. Amendments to the agenda gentlemen, Commissioner Candace?
No.
Nor do I, Commissioner Prince?
I would, we received a letter from Terry Skanga from the Upper Arkansas. I don't know if it's really an agenda addition, but it's beyond the scope of the water rights attorney, so I would like to discuss that letter during that if it's acceptable.
Okay, is that in the form of a motion sir?
It is a motion sir. I move that we review the Skanga letter at the time we've discussed the legal counsel for water rights.
Okay, alright, I'll second that. The movement is seconded to consider the letter from Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District during the consideration of counsel for water rights discussion. And to be technically correct, it was an email, is that right?
It was an email, a copy. It was an actual letter.
I saw it as an email, but it's a letter.
But it was emailed to us as incorrect. It was an email, but a letter.
Probably gonna send a hard copy.
Come in, how are you?
It looks like.
Good morning. Further discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote all in favor of amending the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed aye? Most carries? We will bring that topic up under the last item of business on the agenda today. Further amendments to the agenda gentlemen? Hearing none, we will move on. We do not have any minutes to approve, so we'll move to audience introductions. Ms. Jackie, before we start, I might just ask if you would speak relatively loudly and clearly because our Clerk to the Board will record those names as you introduce yourselves, correct?
Jackie Buehler scored a Sentinel.
How do you spell that?
P-E-G-G-I, with an I.
Leslie Caldwell.
Thank you. Just go back there.
Ginny Sullivan.
Good morning.
Tom Sullivan.
Good morning.
Wilson Jarvis.
Oh!
Jeff Uthea, US Forest Service.
Destiny Chapman, US Forest Service.
Peggy Knight.
Joe Knight.
Okay. Yes sir.
Alan Leslie.
Holly Miller.
Mary Ellen Lasage.
Charles Proctor. Wayne Ewing. Wetnaw Tribune.
Shannon Proctor.
Michael Mesky. Welcome Michael.
Let's spell him on the last one.
Yep. I only am missing Mr. Chapman's first name.
Ms. Chapman?
Destiny.
Yeah, there, Destiny.
That would be Destiny, yes.
Sorry.
That's okay.
And I wish to add a dollar for every time somebody mispronounced Uthea, Uthea, Utter, Utower. Yeah. And sir, would you like to introduce yourself?
Hello, I'm Eric with ECP. Eclampsus Vitus.
Okay, yeah, nice to see you, thanks for being here. Alright, hello sir, how are you?
I'm running late today.
That's okay, no problem. I'm sorry, we're kinda out of room. Would you introduce yourself sir?
Stan Robinson, ECP.
Thank you.
What's your first name?
Stan.
Stan Robinson?
Yes. Eclampsus Vitus, we will have a conversation about that later on. Nice to have you gentlemen here. Thank you all, welcome, nice to have you, appreciate it. Commissioner Items. Commissioner Prince, would you care to begin sir?
I'd be happy to, thank you. Our last meeting was in Wetmore since then. I attended the strategic plan adoption meeting on the 21st. Later that afternoon, we discussed the RFP, the questions that we would ask for our courthouse architect. I met the next morning with Terry Gulliver, who is a hydrologist concerning water in the valley. I also met on Monday with the Upper Arkansas Area Council Government in Colorado Springs. That was the CDOT quarterly meeting. It was wonderful. I gave them kudos for the two signs that they put up by Rosita Road and Highway 69 South. They are kinda come to us probably in April, towards the end of April, to discuss three options they have for making that intersection safer. I re-aided to them that we really would like that berm lowered if it's possible and that the county would certainly entertain being involved in its equipment to help lower that. At 5:00 that evening, we had a BOCC workshop, which of course I attended.
I think it was 3:00 sir.
3:00.
If you're talking about the water.
I should have put my glasses on, it was 3:00, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next morning, we spent the, actually the next day, we spent the entire day listening to proposals from the five companies for the strategic plan, no, I'm sorry, I said that wrong. The architects for the new Justice Center. All five of them were just excellent and I was very pleased with the outcome of that. I didn't do anything.
Then when did you rest?
That's what I've been up to for the last one week.
And then he rested for a day.
To your credit sir, you've done all that without ever going home.
There's truth to that.
The mud season.
The bluebirds are chirping and the mud smell.
No. We'll leave it to that, because I think that sounds pretty western. I've done all that and never made it home.
And that is the truth.
Commissioner Candace?
Okay, similar, but we'll, so it makes it easier for me. Yeah, that Justice Center meeting was very good and the RFP review was good. I'm anxious to see what the team came up with today. I guess that's what we're doing.
We'll vote on it later.
And we'll vote on it and you'll get a chance to hear about that. The, I met also with the town of Silvercliff's trustees, couple of them on, they're interested as Silvercliff is hiring somebody to discuss broadband hardwire into Silvercliff and Westcliff. It's an opportunity for us all to work together down the road, I'll bring that up when they get a little further along. And then Frontier Pathways, you've seen the signs, the blue signs on the highway. We've got a good group, several representatives on the board, I'm one of them, the board of directors for that effort. And it actually ties in with a lot of our strategic planning discussions that we've had on museums and exploiting the great things like the first, very first campground in the whole of the United States is the Cart Heart Campground down the south, the Hardscrabble area. So I didn't know that. And something really worthwhile to get people off of height 25 and come up here and see things and be a tourist. The working roads, one of my part-time jobs and been driving all the roads and a lot of people have been, some good comments in how great it is. We're doing a lot of work on, if you've been out Grape Creek lately, pulling that road bed up, getting rid of the rumble strips and putting down some new gravel on that as well. It's a good time to do it because it's soft enough to make things happen. And that's what Road and Bridge are doing quite a bit in the valley. Also had some issues, subdivision, even though the county has granted rights aways and when they accepted these subdivisions way back when, like Colonel Verdi is a good example, that doesn't necessarily mean we maintain them. We can only take the maintenance on things we can afford to do and have enough traffic on it to do that. So those are issues that we need to keep in front of people, yes?
Before you move off roads, a nice lady asked me about Route 328E, which is off Rosita, saying it was a county road that we don't maintain. I told her I would find out.
I'll find out exactly where that is, but probably we don't.
And that's fine, I just would like to get back to her because she asked, there's a series of roads off Rosita, I think it's A, E, and K.
Yep.
If we could just get a, you know, what the deal is on it.
And one thing to keep in mind, it's the subdivision developer, whoever the homeowners are, to make the road come up to specs before the county can accept it. And even if it is at specs, it doesn't necessarily mean it can be accepted either.
It's fine, I just want to give her a valid answer.
Okay. Let's see, what else? The, the meeting that we had with the water rights and that kind of thing, it's good meetings, we've had good discussions with them. And the letter we'll talk about later is a good one to discuss, so if you can stick around about that, it'd be great. Let's see. Century Link, we have a meeting today with the Century Link team, which is the Forest Service Century Link CDOT, on how we're fixing the phones down the washed-out south Hardscrabble. It also impacts a bigger picture because they're moving into taking advantage of having to do the work to bring broadband hardwired into the valley. And so they've applied for grants, Century Link has, Forest Services is working with us, et cetera. So that will be an interesting meeting this afternoon as well.
That's at 3:00, is that correct?
Yeah. 2:00.
2:00. Library.
Library. And then I, just as sort of an aside, I was, spring, everybody cleans their house and gets the garage to where they can get in. This is not a rabbit. I ran across this famous cowboy poet and it reminded me of when I first met the cowboy poet himself.
Oh God.
2003, I think it was.
Spring cleaning.
Yeah, spring cleaning, it brought me, you know, it, we were, started to be a team way back when, when I first met, I actually met him a little bit before that, but interesting, we'll have to pass this around and you'll enjoy seeing him.
You started it, I could pass around your third grade picture.
I know, no, 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 don't put my third grade picture out there. He did find the third grade picture.
Anything else sir? You're a mess.
Nah, I'm done.
As these gentlemen have indicated, or as you gentlemen have indicated, I attended basically those same set of meetings, the water workshop and the oral presentations of course. I also attended a joint meeting of Cart Chamber Tourism and the Economic Development Corporation. They met at Westcliff Town Hall trying to bring some collaborative efforts together again in those four entities and so that was a good conversation, I really just sat in on it and listened. So, that's primarily it without going into a bunch of repetition of the stuff that you guys already talked about, so. Anything else gentlemen, under Commissioner Reports? I hesitate, but I guess I'm required by law to see if our counselor has anything to report.
Well, I get paid by the word, so yes. At our meeting in Wetmore last week, Kitshe, Fire Chief, our Wet Mountain Fire Protection District, asked if we, the county, could loan them a water truck to use for a period of time until they could acquire one for themselves and that was important for their ISO rating, the insurance rating, it makes a big difference on homeowners' insurance premiums. And the commissioners agreed to do that, so I prepared the intergovernmental agreement and sent it, I think it's, that's been signed by Kitshe on behalf of the Fire Protection District and by our chairman, so I think that's all taken care of. The marijuana ordinance, or proposed ordinance 19-01, which is on the agenda today for second reading, I worked on the, well, actually the hard work was done by Sheriff Barley and Commissioner Prince, they met with some of the individuals who were unhappy with what was proposed at the first reading, there've been some revisions and I'll, I worked on that and we'll talk about that when that comes up on the agenda. And I attended the Justice Center meeting also, just because it was interesting, not because I have a vote on that, but I understand what the recommendation is and it was my own choice too, so when we get to that, we'll see where we're at on it. I guess that's pretty much what I did for the last week.
That was two cents a word.
Okay. I'm ready to go home.
Thank you sir, appreciate that. Administrative Assistant Items. We'll move on, public comment. I would just tell you, if you're not aware, we will have two different public comment periods, one now, one at the end of the meeting. You are certainly welcome to bring up and address any issue or questions or comments that you have. You may or may not get a response from the commissioners, if it's a question, they may choose to answer it, they may not, but certainly you're welcome to voice any concerns or questions you may have at this time. Yes sir?
Yeah, on the Upper Arkansas, the opposition to, I hope the commissioners stay the course on the document that they signed originally, in opposition of that.
Okay, we're in public comment, so you're fine. Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
I gotta go.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you, we'll move on, Staff Report. Good morning.
Morning.
My golly, we have certain protocols.
Oh, I know.
Clerk never stands and shakes hands.
That's okay.
Because she's busy writing.
Busy keeping up. We don't want to interrupt.
That's right. And how are you?
I'm good, how are you guys?
Good, doing well, thank you. We've had an opportunity to look this document over, any questions gentlemen?
No. Same question I ask every month, any anomalies, anything that should be brought to our attention?
We look good for now.
Pretty standard. I'll go ahead and I'll move that we accept the February monthly report from the Treasurer.
I'll second it.
Moving to second it to accept the February 2019 Treasurer's Report, discussion. Okay, just wanted to track one thing. Hearing none, we proceed to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed aye? Thank you ma'am. There will be a forthcoming voucher from somebody in the courthouse, gentlemen, because we are sick and tired of donating screwdrivers, so we're gonna start charging. Two screwdrivers grew legs in the last 30 days and walked out of the courthouse.
We're hiding it now, we're not putting it out.
Call the sheriff.
Call the sheriff. Thank you ma'am, have a great afternoon or a great day.
Thanks.
One woman tried to lean on me to provide another screwdriver.
I did.
You did.
Oh yeah. Alright, unfinished business gentlemen?
I have none sir.
Nor do I. Commissioner Candace? Okay, we'll move on, new business, there will be public comment allowed for each of the items under new business and old business if it were applicable on anything that is an action item and that the commissioners would be voting on, so I will ask prior to each vote if there's any public comment about those. First item of business is a review of the vouchers. Obviously gentlemen, we have received that packet in advance, any, well.
The other file movement, we accept the voucher.
Thank you.
As presented.
I'll second it.
Moving to second it to accept the vouchers for February 1 through February 28. Discussion? Yes sir, go ahead.
It's really not discussion, this is just whining, but I hate to pay.
Okay, hold on, let me get ready. I'm ready.
Okay. I hate to pay $9,813.76 every quarter to a district attorney who I feel provides minimal advantage services to this county. It's just a wine, I know we have to do it, but I just want to tell you, I feel that that's your taxpayers and my tax money out the window.
You might explain that that's, each county has a paraded piece and that's why we pardon.
That's correct, we fund the majority, well, we fund our share, but the reason I say this is we've gone to the district attorney multiple times and asked for assistance and we've been rebuffed most of the time, so I just don't feel we get the service that we should get for the kind of money that we pay. Just a comment, my personal.
Okay, I believe I could be walking out on a limb here, however, if you're gonna whine sir, I expect you to whine accurately, I believe this is not quarterly, this would be monthly.
Yeah!
That's a lot more money.
That's true. And the other thing you might mention is, we didn't take it sitting down, we, every time we get together and meet with these guys, we argue about the cost.
And nothing gets resolved, unfortunately, and our hands are tied. So now you know the rest of the story as Paul Harvey would have told you.
So we need to demand that they show up.
If you have any angst over that, I might try to ease the pain by telling you Fremont County's share of that district attorney is over $100,000 a month. We pay nine, so. Okay, anyway, sir.
Okay, I apologize.
No, no problem.
I just, I can't hold those kind of comments in.
No problem. Yeah, I had looked up a couple of things, I see there was $894 expended on a child fatality grant that is handled through Public Health and that is for some training and for some child CPR, hate to call them dummies. What are they?
No, I have something to sell.
Anyway, and a training that Carmelene attended, or is going to attend in Colorado Springs, so that was an unusual thing. And then under Road and Bridge, it was reported that, I probably won't be able to find it while I'm scrolling through it, but that we had expended $9,536 on grinder blades. And I was pretty sure the county doesn't own a grinder and that's grader blades, they buy the year's worth of.
Cutting edges.
Cutting edges, grader blades, they buy those all at one time, so that was that, yes ma'am?
How much did we pay Steve Casner?
I can tell you that if you give me a second, 300 and, I think it was 369 dollars, but invariably when I'm under pressure, my vision goes blurry and then for me to find that figure.
Give me a $300 rate.
Yes, 368 or 386.
Yeah, that's fine, thank you.
We haven't paid him yet, we're getting ready to vote on whether to pay him or not.
He was a former water commissioner that came up.
Yeah, you might tell him.
Yeah, Steve Casner, we hired him to come up and meet with the commissioners to inform us about water, water rights and water law.
He was good, he gave us some history.
He was a former water commissioner for District 11, or 12, sorry. I don't, it's in here.
It's close enough, just.
Anything else gentlemen?
Not for me sir.
I would just.
Oh, one thing, we were talking budget, it's time, probably next meeting, not the next meeting, but soon, we need, we had planned to bring each department in to see how we're tracking against the budget and make sure we're moving the money left and right when it's needed.
Excellent.
So we'll make sure that's on the agenda.
Good point.
Yeah, and I wonder really, this might be a Kelly question, if that, we couldn't do that during those staff reports, ask them to bring that documentation instead of doing it during the regular meeting. They're here, so we just need to ask them to bring those figures in as they come in. And I think that's the idea.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
And then obviously, an unusual line item in the budget was for the Ready Set Go Grant, $39,858, and that's grant money passed through for the fire mitigation work done in Silvercliff Ranch, so I toured that site, the works, works going along, so other than that, I didn't have anything else. Gentlemen, any further discussion? Public comment? Hearing none, proceed to vote, all in favor of approving the vouchers for February 2019, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed aye? Most carries? If you would do the honor sir to start that process, we'll initial these vouchers, give those to our administrative assistant and they'll actually start printing those checks today and they'll be stamped before the end of the day, so we will initial those as we Justice Center Design Review, do you know Mr. Mike was, Sheriff Barley planned on coming over?
Yes sir, he was.
Do you, would you feel comfortable if we held off?
Till he gets here.
Till he gets here. Are you? Because that's.
Most comfortable.
That's all I'm concerned about really is.
You look comfortable.
How can you be comfortable? I didn't know if you were here to speak on his behalf, that's why I was asking. With consent gentlemen then, I would ask that we hold off on that item until Sheriff Barley arrives. Any opposition, Commissioner Candace?
No.
Mr. Prince?
No sir.
Okay, thank you. That brings us by golly to the consideration of the plaque for the Basseck Mine. Welcome gentlemen. If you might, if you all three want to come up, yeah, we can just kind of line up there by the doorway if you'd like, that's fine. We'll extend a hand of greeting and welcome, nice to see you.
Nice to see you sir.
Hello, sorry.
Good to see you guys.
Thank you much.
How are you?
Good morning sir.
And would you mind telling us where you guys are from?
Originally, Eclampsus Vitus started back in Virginia in 1800s.
I met you personally.
Okay. I live in Westcliff, work at Seminole Manufacturing.
Oh, okay.
Been there five years, came from California, first move ever. So, that's where I'm from.
Okay.
Eric King.
Yeah, they introduce themselves once, but yeah.
Stan Robinson, I moved up here from Denver about five years ago. Good job.
Nice, good.
Michael Mesky, owner of Elite Home Service.
Great, alright, welcome. So with that, obviously you're here representing Eclampsus Vitus as a historical preservation mostly for mining in western.
Western history.
History in the western half of the US?
Western half of the US, we're, our chapter of alpacas is the last chapter from the west, going east. Alpaca's been a chapter since 1990 and there's over 42 chapters in the west coast. And pretty much, there's a book right there, I forgot to bring over, but it's full of all the plaques from 2008 to 2012.
Wow.
So if you always want to, we did throw some plaques in there.
Yeah, I saw some, yeah.
Well, mainly Colorado, but this is throughout the west. So, yeah.
And upon some research, I find the purported to be the oldest fraternal organization, certainly in the US.
In the US, yes, it is. We do a lot of work for, we call them widows and orphans, and that's basically how it started was miners, a miner would die, they would pass the hat to take their, pay the mortgage, food and stuff like that for miners, and we still do that too. We're actually gonna be taking over Wild Bill's Toy Drive.
Oh nice, good.
That's wonderful.
That's great Eric.
Yeah. Yeah, so we were getting that process going and stuff like that, because we do the Bop Telemossy one down in Colorado Springs every year and a bunch of us go out there and volunteer our time, you know, so. But with the placings, it doesn't cost anything for you guys. We do all the placking, like last year we placked the Silvercliff Mine in Silvercliff, right there at that triangle, low on funds, so we went out there and cut wood, hustled to get a plaque, because a plaque costs about $1,200. plaque costs about $1,200 to make.
Wow.
So, but we have the funds this year, because of our last campout, we made enough money for, for our plaque. So, we're just getting permission, we talked to the owner of the Basseck Mine, and he's actually working on saving, Mr. Bass, they built a high school in Minnesota?
Yes.
In Minnesota. Well, they want to tear it down, so he's been working on trying to save the high school. So, this is kind of working out for him, too, because he's trying to preserve history, and he's the owner of the Basseck Mine, and he, uh, our friend Gil, Gil Vasquez, has been in contact with him, which he was supposed to be here, um, and got the approval to place the plaque, but we just wanted the approval from the commissioners, too, to place the plaque, you know?
Can I ask two questions, please? First is, um, why this Basseck Mine is part of mine?
Yes.
And your organization is gonna work with the owner?
Mm-hmm.
Why is this even coming before the commission? Is this just a courtesy?
It's a courtesy.
That's wonderful, and I sincerely appreciate that.
It's a courtesy and all that stuff, and, you know, and to let you guys be aware of that, we're here, and we're, we want to be more work, like, the interesting thing about the first campground in Colorado, that is making my wheels turn.
First campground in the United States.
See? And my, my wheels are turning, hey, let's go placking, you know, work on placking that, so to keep the history alive.
Where are you gonna put the plaque?
Uh, on the, so that as a-
For the public to see.
Oh, right on, basically right on the road.
On the road.
Yeah, and it's gonna be in the National Registry of Historical Plaques, so, and, uh, like, where my chop is, the plaque I see that I put up last year, I see so many people looking at that.
Oh, yeah.
You know, there's actually people that will tour for plaques.
And the location, that's not gonna be on a C.D.A.R. right away?
Nope, it's not gonna be on-
Be on private land?
Private, but right on, basically-
It's on the county road, actually passing.
Yeah.
I understand that, I know the one I'm talking about.
Basically, we're gonna try to put it right on that line where it's not infringing anybody and still, period, you know?
I commend you for this.
So where a motor raider doesn't hit it?
Yes, exactly, yeah, you know?
I commend you for keeping our history going and putting up a plaque so visitors can see what's going on, and for those of us who live here would like more information, so I'd like to move on. It's a very worthwhile project, and I really appreciate you doing it.
Yeah, I was, a couple comments. One, uh, your noted interest about the, um, original Forest Service Campground started by a man with the last name of Carhart.
Carhart.
And that gentleman sitting right over there that's gonna look at you and smile, that is the guy you need to talk to about that, because that's one of his passions as well. Wouldn't that be cool to have a plaque up on the, near the highway there, at that entrance?
Yeah, and we do have a lot of displays down in the actual Davenport Camp, you know, but nothing really on the highway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, after a conversation with Mr. Ruthie, I drove down in there, it's pretty cool, very cool, so, yeah.
Making my wheels turn.
Get a chance, yeah, so get a visit with Jeff at some point.
I would definitely do that.
Yeah, there's a couple questions, so, uh, I have, and I'll get an answer to your question, I'm assuming the plaque will look something similar to that?
Yep, it'd be, uh, bronze.
But with that particular wording on it, or something similar?
Something similar to that, well, we would like some feedback from you guys, um, and I will leave my email address and stuff like that.
Yeah, so this is the one that you had referenced earlier-
Yes.
-of June of 2018.
Yep.
Uh, yeah, Chair would entertain a motion.
I'll move that we accept the, how we want to phrase it, it's a proposal to sponsor the plaque.
I'll second it.
I'm going to second it, authorize a proposal for placking the Basseck Mine by the Alpacker Chapter of the E. Klampus Vitus Organization. Discussion. Uh, a question, when do you think this would occur?
So, the happening June, uh, our campout, we're gonna be at Lake Louise, we do it, try to spread it out to Colorado, but June 21st, 22nd, 23rd. June 21st is the day of the placking, we're gonna do it probably about noon. It's gonna be announced throughout town, so people can show up. Um, and like last year, a few of the public people showed up, because they weren't sure what was going on, they didn't understand, but now it's, you know, we're starting to get our name out, and-
It's a good tourist thing.
It is, and so, uh, we'll, we'll make sure everything's out, uh, we work with Peggy, you know, actually, her, uh, her restaurant is an ECV watering hole, we call them, that's our, basically, where we, we go and go hang out, you know, if we want to get together and, you know?
And I have a practice.
Yeah.
Water hole, number one.
If you would please coordinate with Meredith, and she'll give you the email address-
Sounds good.
-so that any or all of us could attend, and, again, I just want to-
Oh, yeah, you're gonna be-
-congratulate you and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, thank you very much, yes.
All right, any further discussion, public comment?
Done.
Hearing none, we proceed to vote. All in favor of supporting the Basseck Mine placking, June 21, 2019, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries, everyone, gentlemen, thank you. Good to have you guys here.
Thank you for taking over Wild Bill's, I need to talk to you.
That is really great.
Cause I have some great ideas.
Oh, good, cause we need you.
Polly, Chair up here.
It's a little cold, I thought. A little stuffy.
Yes, I appreciate it. All right, very good. Um, I don't see him yet. Um, again, gentlemen, by consent, I'd like to move down this tourism bylaws thing real quick, if you don't mind, and, uh, no problem. Uh, or we, we could press on, I guess, now, I was just gonna have the, move on to the Forest Service, maybe we better stick to the agenda. Uh, so with that, we will move on to tourism bylaws. Ms. Peggy, I understand you're here to represent tourism.
I am.
You come forward, ma'am, I'll shake your hand. Welcome to these commissioners, welcome, how are you?
Thank you.
Peggy? Good to see you, have a seat.
So, I know there was confusion with my red line version.
We're good now.
But we are good now. So, the version that you have is as we would like to, um, have approved.
Thanks for fixing that, of course.
Um...
You have a question?
You may, sir.
Everybody in the, in the county is either a commissioner or board, and you are considering being called a bureau?
Correct.
Please tell us why.
Well, at the tourism board meeting, when Deb Adams, who's our chair, uh, suggested the change from board to bureau, she read, and I, had I known that you were going to ask, I would have brought, but the point is, that bureau seems to us to sound more user-friendly than a board, uh, that we feel that we would be more approachable as a bureau.
Okay. It's just a change from our normal terminology for our committees and our groups, our boards, you know, that kind of thing, so I was just a little surprised. I don't think it's a big deal.
Are we, are we considering that today, or?
Well, it's part of the bylaws.
Yeah.
It's the very first thing, the name of the organization is Custer County Tourism Bureau.
I think there may be a statutory problem, you know, our tourism board is created under Colorado Revised Statutes, and we have the lodging tax, that way uses the term board there, I don't think we can just change it to a bureau.
Yeah, I agree, I looked that up, Colorado Revised Statutes, of course, it doesn't specifically say, it's a prohibition of some, but I can't support the word bureau either, I think it should remain board, but, uh, Chair would entertain a motion.
Could look into it, I guess, later, get-
I'll go ahead and I'll make the motion for approval, because I really would like to discuss issues.
Yes, thank you, sir.
I'll second.
The move is seconded to, uh, approve the bylaws for the, uh, Custer County Tourism Board, discussion. Obviously, we talked about the bureau thing, if you want to continue that, we can, uh-
I would like to make one comment on that, cause I don't have a problem looking into it, if you really feel strong, and if, if you can research what the rest of the state, who has the same statutes governing tourism boards, uh, and if they've got some other thing that sets a precedence, we ought to probably know that.
Yeah, I, I've looked, I can't find anything, but I certainly haven't looked at every set of bylaws for tourism boards in the state.
I remember one of the board meetings, I asked Deb, why bureau? This has came up earlier, and I, and that's why I asked you, cause I really can't remember, she had what seemed like a reasonable response at the time, there was something that was different about tourism than the others, so, um, you know, I, I hate, if it's statutory, I don't think we have any choice whatsoever.
I don't believe it's statutory.
Okay. Um, I don't know, I, I don't have major problems with it, but it just seems, we're not consistent anyway with some boards, some committees, some bureau, I don't-
Come back.
Uh, yeah, I, I just think it should be left as a tourism board, that's what's in the statutes, that's what's in all of our documentation, I don't like changes, so we can say we changed. If, if board was not a legal term, or if it was not being used consistently throughout the county, then I would have a little different treatment about that, but I want to move on, if, unless somebody else has something to say about that. Article two, uh, under purposes, uh, Colorado Revised Statutes, I looked it up, Title 30, Article 11, Section 107.5, should be a decimal point there, uh, for the establishment of-
Yes, and I had it that way, and someone changed it.
Okay. Um, let's see, gentlemen, certainly jump in anytime you want, uh-
Overall, you did a good job pulling it together.
I agree with that, I mean, overall, this is a great document.
Lot better than it was.
Couple of general questions. Um, I'm looking at Article 2A.
Two? No. No, that's three.
3A, I apologize.
Hold on, let's get caught up, okay, go ahead.
Put your glasses on. Yes, ma'am. Is it the intent that you must be a full-time resident of Custer County? And then the question came to me, and that's fine if that's what you want, what constitutes a full-time resident? And what I mean by that is, if someone owns a home here, but only visits periodically, how do you determine who is a full-time resident, who isn't?
Well, I think we go back to domicile in general, and we do have in here that registered voter alone is, doesn't qualify.
You told me what doesn't qualify, but if you put the word domicile as opposed to full-time resident-
Okay.
-I, I personally would fully understand what you're talking about.
All right. But we can certainly do that.
Yeah, I had drafted a definition of residency back, uh, either last fall or early this spring, didn't get any traction on it, but this is exactly why I tried to come up with a definition of residency. Depends on, I guess, how much teeth you really want in that, that statement about being a full-time resident. Uh, I've, I'll just read you the four things that I thought if we were really gonna do, it's not just tourism, we got this throughout the county. A person must have a valid Colorado driver's license with a Custer County address. A person must be registered voter in Custer County. A person must have, if owned vehicles, registered in Custer County, and a person must regularly receive mail at a Custer County address.
That's the definition of domicile.
I disagree, but I won't argue semantics, the point is, a full-time resident, can they live in Phoenix three months out of the year and be a full-time resident? I say no. Uh, if, I'm sure you've had this discussion amongst your members of the tourism board, but-
We, our thinking is that we want people who are dedicated to this county, and-
Agree 100%. Yeah, 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 the definite, or these four definitions, in my opinion, do not answer the question of, are they a full-time resident or a part-time resident? Whether they own a home here or not, they could be a part-time resident and live here 11 months out of the year.
And certainly, your domicile could be Custer County, and you live 11 months elsewhere.
Right, it doesn't make you a full-time resident. Uh, we've had this discussion with several boards, and that's, I don't know, but if you say full-time resident, and somebody spends a couple months in the winter in Arizona, is that gonna be an issue? I concur 100%, I think, with the philosophy of, there's no reason to have people on your board if they're not gonna be here, that's what it boils down to.
Yes.
Uh, at some point, I could see the tourism board coming to the commissioner and say, we want you to approve dropping a member because they, they just don't come to our meetings, and that would fall under this whole Article 3, in my opinion, but, you're comfortable with the language, the way it is currently, without further explanation. Just a question, I'm not challenging you, I'm just-
Got you. Help yourself. Please. Here's how I would like to suggest, certainly, and the suggestion is the same thing I'm trying to do right now, is say, we're giving them the responsibility, let's give them the authority, if they feel it's not appropriate, let them come back to us and say, we have this member that we doesn't, we do not feel is, is in line with the spirit of what we want. So, rather than nitpick it, Mr. General, I think we would just give them the authority to say domicile in Custer County, and let them come to us and feel if there's an issue they bring to us.
Okay, I agree.
That's my suggestion.
Okay, all right, good, we'll move on. Anything else, gentlemen? There's a lot of changes, no question.
I like it.
Totally a different document than-
You did a good job.
Thank you.
Than what was written in the beginning.
It's not my first rodeo.
I know.
Can I jump in here?
Yes, sir.
Cause I was looking at the statutory language, I think Peggy's right, the statute does not specifically say that you have to have a tourism board, it says, the commissioners shall appoint a panel, uh, that will handle the lodging tax fund, and this panel, and then it makes reference to a marketing entity, but they don't use the term board here, so I think our only problem may be the resolution back when the lodging tax passed, I think it made reference to board then, and we may have to amend that if we, if you decide you want to call it a bureau instead of a board.
I've heard of tourism bureaus before, I don't know how it relates to the, this particular statute.
Certainly, the Resolution 12-01 spoke to, uh, Custer County Tourism Board.
Board, right.
Uh, signed on the 7th day of February 2012.
Which I guess the commissioners at that time named it a board.
Hmm, yeah. Anything else here, gentlemen, that jumps out? Um, let's see, membership was five members, is that correct?
Maximum of nine, minimum of five.
Minimum of five, yeah.
And we know the statute doesn't limit the membership, you all are.
Yes. It's too unwieldy.
Yeah.
That's up to you to-
Statute sets the minimum, uh, it doesn't address the-
That's right.
-maximum. Well, if the tourism board was willing to leave the name board, I believe I could support this document, if not, then I will vote against approving the bylaws. So that's where I stand, gentlemen. Any further discussion? What do you think, Ms. Peggy, are you, are you bought into bureau?
I was, but I'm certainly not going to make it an issue that we can't get this thing signed and run with after four months.
If you make one change, you come back with a good argument, and we can consider the name change.
That's fine.
Well, you may, you won't get a vote from me to do that.
That doesn't mean, wait, you're speaking for him.
I don't need your vote, I just need these two.
So, so if you make a good enough case, and he still doesn't believe it, you can try as often as you want.
Well, as Commissioner Prince has said, that's why there's three of us, not one.
That's right.
Yeah.
I call the question, let's move on.
Uh, previous question's been called, all in favor of previous question which ends immediate, or ends all debate and calls for immediate vote, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Wait. I'm sorry. You're calling the question, not the vote on the issue.
He called the question. We're voting on previous question.
Right.
Correct.
Nay.
Nay. Motion fails. Previous question fails. Further discussion?
Yeah. I'm not hung up on bureau or, I mean, to me, it's another one of those, they're such a separate entity, they're the only entity that I'm aware of that collects tax dollars. You read the term, councilor, just a minute ago. What was it again?
Panel.
Select a panel to administer the tourism fund.
Thank you. We don't have panel in here. I'm not hung up on bureau, so I just want to make the comment, I'll keep calling questions.
I'm not going to call it again.
The only other question I had on the whole document was the distributing up to 10% of the lodging tax revenue. Have you guys talked about that? Or is that a historical thing?
It's not historical.
Okay.
Maybe statutory, I'm not sure.
No, it's not. Since I've been on, involved with this, the question has always come when they do give money to other committees or boards within the county, it has always been to promote tourism. Tourism, my eyes is to bring people from outside of Custer County into Custer County, not supporting an in-house program where we're not bringing people out. And I think the tourism board has done an excellent job with that, so I feel they've administered this very well.
Thank you.
Then the only other question I had, and this really just came up yesterday, let me see if I can find it, under Article 6. Oh, boy, oh, boy. Article 6, Section A states that monthly meetings of the tourism board shall be held. You've got that statement in there twice. Shall be held, shall be held, at such times and places fixed by the members at its first meeting each year. And then somewhere, it said that the tourism board was going to meet in the commissioner's room, unless you have deleted that.
I don't see it. I just, I see that the notice will state the date, time, location, and agenda for the meeting.
Yeah, it was, I think, in the past scheduled to meet in the commissioner's room. Now, it may have been dropped out of this proposal. And the reason I bring that up is, after setting in the meeting yesterday, there was some discussion about, I think it's probably, well, I know it can be made public, because that was a public meeting I set in yesterday, about maybe the tourism board, cart, economic development, and the chamber all sharing a meeting in the, sharing a meeting room in the basement of the West Clifton Hall. So if it's been deleted out of here, no issue. I was thinking it was still in there that you were going to meet in the commissioner's room. But if we go with the language that says it will be stated at the first meeting of the year of where you're going to meet, then I think it's a moot point.
I didn't think it was appropriate to be in the bylaws.
Okay. Yeah, because you may decide you want to meet somewhere else for whatever reason, but according to your bylaws, you have to meet here. So that was my concern, and I agree with your assessment there. Good. I think those were all the changes or concerns, questions that I had. I just wonder, Article 5, Section D, second to the last sentence in that entire paragraph, there should be a dollar sign in front of the 100. Because in this county, could be 100 pigs, 100 cows...
I have. Mine, I've got it.
Oh, you do have, okay. I do not in my red line version. Okay. So again, we're looking at two different documents. Gosh dang it. The motion is to approve the bylaws for tourism board. Pardon? No, we voted on previous question that Commissioner Canada called to end the debate, and that failed, so we're still in a period of debate.
But don't you need to say as amended? If we're going to change the domicile?
The amendments that we're making to the trail that I'm looking at.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I just don't want to approve it as amended. As amended with these changes.
Okay. So let's go back through those. One, and depends on whose document we're talking about now, right? Because as commissioner, I'm going to vote on the document that's in front of me, not the documents in front of you. So that's where I'm coming from. Commissioner Canada, did you have changes?
No.
I recommend changing, or leaving the word board instead of bureau, so that would be...
I agree.
An amendment. That would be Article 1. Article 2, 107.5, instead of 1,075. Full-time resident, we're agreed, you can leave that.
No, we said domiciled in Custer County.
Did you give us the wording?
Domiciled in Custer County.
An individual, so we're going to scratch is a full-time resident of?
Correct.
And insert?
Who is domiciled in Custer County?
Okay.
And the redundancy you found?
And then, the determination. Sorry, I'm still on 3A.
I'm sorry.
So we're going to have to change the wording on 3A, the second full-time resident, correct? The determination as to whether or not an individual is a full-time resident in Custer County shall be made by the VOCC. So you want to change that to be as to whether or not an individual is domiciled in?
Correct.
Five, the dollar sign. Five D.
Yep. Six A, you said?
Shall be held.
Oh, yeah. Delete, shall be held.
Gets everything we discussed.
Okay, I really appreciated 8D about how they're going to run their meetings according to Robert's Rules.
What did you say about shouting during meetings?
Necessary.
Those rhetorical.
Shout away. Further discussion, gentlemen?
No, sir.
Public comment? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote as the document has been amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
You're out of here.
No, I'm not.
Like yesterday's news. Oh, okay.
Farley, we did roll down one item on our agenda. Or a couple of items, actually. So if you would like to come forward, sir, you would be next on the Justice Center Design Contract Award.
Blue jeans Friday.
I forgot.
Well, if you don't, no, so you pay a dollar if you want to wear blue jeans on Friday. We save that money, and then we donate it to, like, Wild Bill's Toy Run or different things.
Correct. I did wear blue jeans, so I will pay up.
Maybe you should give it directly to him. Maybe it's a treasure.
Put it on to the commissioner.
Doesn't necessarily apply to you.
Oh, it doesn't?
Something we do at our office.
Well, welcome. Morning.
Morning, how are you, gentlemen?
Doing well, thank you. So, Justice Center Committee met?
We did. So on the 26th, as you know, the three of you were there, but so on the 26th, we held up the panel that was chosen out of the Citizens Committee to conduct oral interviews for the architectural firms that, the top five firms that we chose from the summit of their packets on the RFP. We conduct those oral interviews. You have the letter and the scoring sheet that I sent to you, or sent to Meredith on Wednesday. So we, as you can see in that letter, and I don't know if you provided any for the group or if you want me to summarize what the letter says.
Whatever you're comfortable with.
I'll probably just let you discuss it. But anyways, as you can see in that letter, so we did conduct those interviews of the five firms. I think the panel essentially agreed that for, any four of the, the top four firms could handle the project quite adeptly, but ultimately, that's not what we were there for. We were there to choose one. After the interviews were over, but before we compiled the scoring, we did a straw poll.
Before you say that, just so everybody understands, we were there to learn. We did not participate in the vote.
Right.
I wasn't there. We were gone.
Right.
This is news.
Yeah.
It's your job to recommend.
Okay. As I did in the letter and the scoring. So of the five firms, I don't know if you want me to list the five firms, Anders, no, okay. So we did a straw poll after the interviews were done, but before we compiled all the scores, everyone, well, seven of the eight members selected Riley Johnson in the straw poll. And then in the...
He concurs, but he brought that in yesterday.
And then, and then when we did the scoring, the scoring revealed, and it was, actually surprised me a little bit, but Riley Johnson did, in fact, get the highest score. I think it was 89. Riley Johnson's 89. SEH, 86. DLR Group, 83. And then Anderson Hollis was an 80. So it's kind of ironic that there were steps of three, but those were the, and then the last one that came was down in the 65 or something like that.
63 and a half.
63 and a half. So with that in mind, the panel agrees, and I know there's a couple of people here from the panel, we would, we would recommend that you select Riley Johnson, who, just for everyone in the room, they have probably the most relative experience with the project the size of, that we're talking about. Certainly, the other firms have plenty of experience as well, but Riley Johnson does, in fact, have a lot. They're in 32 counties. They've done projects in 32 counties in Colorado, Wyoming, New Mexico, Montana, so...
Okay. Chair, would you entertain the motion?
I move we accept the recommendations you presented.
I second it.
I'm moving to second to accept the recommendation of the Justice Center Committee to hire Riley Johnson as our architect, engineer firm for the Justice Center project. Discussion, go ahead, sir. That's all I wanted to do was get us on the board.
You just took care of it. I was just concerned that maybe there was some people who didn't understand what we're doing. From a macro view, you know, we purchased the land, and we hired, we're now hiring the architect to come up with conceptual designs for us to review and come with. My other comment would be to you and your committee, kudos for excellent job done.
Thanks. And I do want to just state, so the only reason I'm the one presenting this is because I'm, they want me to be the chair, not because this is my project or my resolution.
Would you, mostly for the audience's sake, talk to us now about what this firm is going to do?
Sure.
And then where do we go from there?
So the RFP, which we put out in January, and that's what this firm was interviewing for, to be selected for that RFP, essentially, without going into the weeds of it, so they're going to, they're going to conduct programming, programming analysis, which basically means they're going to go, they're going to say, okay, you have this facility now, what are you going to need for 2020, and what, and then what will you need for 2030? And so they'll try to project out what our needs will be for the next, they try to do it for 15, at least 15 years out, with hopes that for 25, but, so they will do that, projections, and that'll come from a lot of different interviews, data, meetings, and we'll sit down with them and we'll, and we'll get that data and that information together for them. Then they will take that back, and then they will, they will basically, essentially put together a conceptual design of what the building would look like, both from a floor plan standpoint, and also from a 3D design on the outside of it. And so they will provide all of that information to us, which then we can look at, and then we can present to the, to the citizens in the, within the county. And then we'll have to also assess the cost of what that building is going to be. They'll help us with that as well. But the cost of that will be what our best avenue is to raise money for that project. And there will be some different options there, and then we'll take it from there.
One thing I want to...
Did I miss anything?
I want to focus something that you said. It's not just presented to the citizens. It was, they're going to do some work to understand what the citizens' concepts are ahead of that time.
Right, so yeah, we'll have some citizen meetings.
Involve in the community a lot of the time.
Absolutely. Yeah, so it'll, yeah, it's, there's going to be meetings, and I don't, I don't know the best phrase to put it, a seminar or a presentation, community involvement as well to get some ideas and thoughts and go from there.
Yes. Go ahead. I'm good. Okay. Couple things, then. I don't believe you mentioned this. If you did, I apologize, but the bid from Riley Johnson was for $65,800.
Correct.
Could you talk to us about how that is going to be paid for?
Yeah, so that is all from a DOLA, or, I'm sorry, from an underfunded court grant that we obtained. So it's 75, we have $75,000 total, I believe, I'm after, so 30, no, 40,000 comes from DOLA.
35.
35, no, 40 from DOLA. I thought it was 35 from underfunded. So essentially, the county, it doesn't cost the county any direct dollars for this RFP and these conceptual designs. And so that's one of the main reasons we're doing it, is because it hasn't cost us any money to this point, other than time.
And do you have the figure of the highest bid? Do you remember what that was?
Anderson Hollis was 74.5. I believe it's 74.5. Might have been 9, but I think it's 74.5.
The highest one, without what you rejected, was over $90,000.
Well, that's, well, that's true. But we didn't even consider them.
And then completion date, timeframe?
August. So we don't have a specific date in August yet. That will, that will be vetted out when we start the time process and how quickly we can move through some of that programming. But August will be the deadline for them to complete it.
All right, good. With a friendly amendment, let's see. Did you make the motion, sir?
Could we add at the price of $65,800 in that motion?
Sure.
You okay with that, sir? You said the motion. My consent. I just think we ought to have that in the motion. Further discussion, gentlemen? Public comment? Let's start right here. Hold on just a second.
I just want to make sure that the company's name is Riley Johnson. There's not a bunch of stuff after that?
Riley Johnson Associates.
Where are they out of?
Denver.
Denver.
R-E-I-L-L-Y.
Oh, R-E-I-L-L-Y.
And they had the offices.
And, sir, you had a question or comment? Okay, yes, ma'am.
That bid does not include reimbursable expenses, so it is the bid plus that, approximately $4,000.
Which still falls under the $75,000 grant.
Right. You're going to make it hard and fast in your motion.
Okay.
Right. Yeah, and does, I don't know if we need to explain what some of those would be. That's for when they come down to do, say, like, a community presentation, where they come down to meet with us. There'll be a few overnight stays, so they're just basically, that's to cover the cost of their hotels, food.
Was not written in the bid, because they had no idea what our request would be.
Right. How much we're going, how many times we're going to expect them to stay overnight for multiple meetings.
And for the record, I'm putting you on the spot here, maybe between all of us, we'd come up... come up, could you tell us who the members of that committee were? They certainly need some recognition because they spent a ton of man-hours on that.
Anne, Mike, you can help me out if you need to. So, so Anne Barthrop was on that, Judge Hunter, who's the county judge. So Lisa Rowe, who is the court administrator, or I think now they changed, the state changed that to court executive, but court administrator. Let's see, trying to go down the list here. So Mike Calpin in the back was, Court Security was on there. Steve Bauer, a community member. Mike Smith, a community member. George Beltman, a community member, and myself. Those were the eight.
Perfect. Thank you. Further discussion? Public comment? Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Are you going to have to amend that motion?
Uh, we did, oh, to the reimbursables, gentlemen?
You don't have an opinion about that?
It's part of the contract.
Part of the contract. And under the, that's all right.
Thank you. Okay, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of hiring Riley Johnson from Associates out of Denver for the bid price of sixty-five thousand eight hundred dollars for the architect for the Justice Center? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posnay? Motion carries. Lot of work involved in that, wasn't it? And you heard him say that he agreed with the groups there, right? So you did have unanimous. Thank you, sir. Oh, here. I want to re-gift this to you. These were given to Commissioner Prince to give to the commissioners, but you were the one that brought that to the commission and that was dealing with how we've become a sanctuary city, so.
I wish I remembered the gentleman's name, but I will get it for you. He asked me to give it to the players in the Second Amendment Sanctuary City, Sanctuary County.
Was he from Fremont County?
No, he's, he lives here.
Oh, okay.
And he gave me two, so I assumed he meant my commissioners who voted, but I think it's certainly appropriate for you.
Thanks.
You bet. That's why I gave it to you because I knew.
No, no.
Okay, very good. Next item on the agenda, our friends from the Forest Service. If you can make your way forward.
What is your destiny?
Good to see you again, Destiny.
Good morning. How are you?
Nice to see you, ma'am.
I'm glad to be here.
Good to see you, sir.
Hey, Jeff.
So, yeah, we just wanted to give you a few updates on the forest, what's happening on your national forest.
Could you do a formal introduction?
And do talk about a resolution on South Hardscrabble. And then introduce our district ranger. This is our new district ranger for the San Carlos Ranger District, which covers just shy of a half a million acres from kind of the Arkansas River down to New Mexico. So this is Destiny Chapman. Thanks.
Hello. I'm pleased to be here. I was fortunate to be selected for this position. Paul Crispin, the former ranger, had been here for a while. He retired in August, so luckily I'm here now, so I'm very honored to be here and be your district ranger for this area, so appreciate that. Just thought we'd give some updates on some stuff, and if you have questions, you can let us know. It was interesting, we've been mentioning Arthur Carhart today, and Jeff here had a brilliant idea that we should host an Arthur Carhart Day because it's in honor of his hundredth birthday. Is that correct?
The hundredth anniversary of him arriving on the San Isabel National Forest in nineteen ninety.
I think, just so you know, that Historic Pathways is also going to be part of that.
Okay, yeah.
You probably need to talk to Bob Bolton.
I will.
To figure out how to begin.
Perfect. Yeah, you know, he really had a strong presence here in Custer County. You know, we've mentioned earlier the Davenport campground. It was also instrumental in the development of the Lake Isabel area as well, so he was a pioneer in developed recreation, so it's pretty neat that he's got ties to this area. So we're looking at June eighth for that.
Yeah.
So above Park here off Main Street.
Yep, the Jess Price Memorial.
Oh, yeah.
Is Arthur Carhart, does it, Carhart?
Uh, I don't know. The family is spelling the same.
I think it's a different spelling.
June eighth, huh?
Yep, it's June eighth. It's also a great opportunity for the community to come out and interact with these specific employees, so look forward to having people there. Just want to give an update on some of the fuels mitigation work that we've been doing. So some of you have probably seen on Facebook, we've been doing a lot of pile burning along the Twelve Mile Road. You tend to see the smoke and see the Facebook postings, that's why I bring it up here, even though that is Pueblo County. Just to let you know, we've burned thirteen thousand piles since the end of January along that stretch. So that was a lot of hand-cutting pile work that had been done, so the crews have done a phenomenal job out there getting that done. Lot of next steps to that project as well. So we'll be looking to, you know, remove additional trees through contracts and timber sales and also do some broadcast burn in that area so that we can retain that investment we made. If we don't keep doing work in there, it's just going to grow back up, so we're excited about that. We are also in our planning phase for a vegetation management project along the East Central Wetts, which would include part of Custer County as well as Pueblo. Our proposal is to treat about sixteen thousand seven hundred acres over a ten-year period. Our treatments would include thinning, creating openings, fuel breaks, and doing some prescribed burning. So our objection period for that project will be about mid-April, so you'll see information on that coming out about that time. We will be doing some prescribed burning this fall, again at Black Mountain, which you'll tend to see some smoke from that. Probably about fifteen hundred acres in the Black Mountain area. Some more work along the Twelve Mile Road, probably about two hundred acres, and then some more work up in Alvarado and Tanglewood, about a hundred acres out there. How much of that work would get done just depends on burn window availability. Do you have stuff that you wanted to add on fuels?
So just that, most of you, of course, saw the piles. We had a little over two thousand piles up behind out around Tanglewood. We did get all of them burned. That whole process started, there's a series of things. We did a timber sale in there first, what we could get to, then we supply firewood to the public at that point, and then whatever's left over that we can't sell or get rid of, we handpile and burn, and that's what you saw in those. About twenty-four hundred piles, I believe, up there. Those are all done, so if you get a chance to go up there, you can kind of see what some of that looks like after we're done with that.
As far as timber, we've, the Blue Lake Sale up on top of the Greenhorn will be completed by the end of September. The Morel Salvage Sale, we sold that in December. That's also up on the Greenhorn. Work on that likely will start this summer, depending on ground conditions. It's pretty muddy right now, but we'll see how it goes. Layout of future sale areas on the Greenhorn will probably start happening in the summer of 2020, with timber sales going out for advertisement probably April through June of 2021. So we're continuing to do our work up there. The Scout Reg Timber Sale is seventy-five percent completed. That termination date currently is June twenty-seventh of this year with a possible one-year extension. Do you want to talk to Persol Field Weather?
So, yeah, just kind of our whole, what we call forest products. So we sell a lot of, we actually sell a lot of firewood in Custer County, so that, and those monies actually stay here and we're able to use it mainly for treating weeds and building roads, so. But those products include firewood and Christmas trees mostly. This year, we're going to start doing some transplants as well, so if you know somebody wants to buy some transplants, I can sell from three to ten transplants for personal use at home, so those kind of things. And then we've also started a commercial forest products where we've had a few folks come in wanting larger quantities of transplants and, and firewood, so we're doing some of those things too. And that's helping us a lot, not only with our fuels mitigation. I kind of try to tier it off of that where it can help us with, you know, creating better fuel breaks along roads and trails and trailheads and that kind of thing.
I do want to give a big thank you to Cindy Howard. She's done tremendous work on mitigation around homes and that investment that she's made really, I think, will pay off, and she's worked very hard on that. So also like to commend everybody's work with the county to address our wildfire issues, the Sun Grayfoot Hills Community Wildfire Protection Plan, and so thank you for your efforts regarding wildfire management and preparedness. It really helps out a lot, so appreciate that. Also want to talk back, got some other stuff.
All that. Just, we do have the, the water in Lake Isabel, so I'm not real familiar with it, but you might be more so, but we've at least tried to cover that. Back in the thirties, when that was built with WPA and CCC, they had permission to fill it, but did not, you know, storage right, so we've been working through that and I think we've come to some resolutions of these sort of things.
We've got a thirty-year agreement with Pueblo Board, a lot of works to waste water on an annual basis to, as part of our augmentation plan, so. We also have a long-term augmentation plan being filed with the State Water Court as well, so while that is being, going through the process, we've got a short-term resolution on that.
So that gives a big kind of highlights, you know, my office is up in Silver Cliff there on Herman Lane. If anybody's ever got questions, I'm not in there a lot, but please feel free, stop by and give me a call. And then...
Before you move on?
No, go ahead.
Tell us how many peoples on your trail maintenance crew for this?
So for, we split our crews up for this district, so we've got about two hundred miles of motorized, and we have about a four-person trail crew that we actually get grants through the OHV sticker, the stickers you buy. We have a really, one of the better programs in the state for motorized trails, about two hundred miles. Then we have about a little over two hundred miles of non-motorized trail crew, and Tom just set me up. And that's just me.
Now, wait a minute. Surely you're bossing somebody.
Yeah, no. I do, we do have two vol, three volunteer groups that are just starting to become active. We have a volunteer group out of Penrose, a backcountry horseman that do some. We have a new trail group here out of West Cliff called Trails for All that is starting to become very active. And then we have one that covers the Spanish Peaks, the Levita Trails. So those are starting to ramp up. We don't have huge volunteer bases in our little rural counties, but the ones that are usually really active and really dedicated. It may be only three people, but, and so we get a lot out of that.
Good, thanks. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, you're all right. So, but yeah, this year, you know, with the snow, it's going to be a lot longer, you know. In the past, we've been, there's been years where we've started clearing trail this time of year. So I'm figuring we won't get to a lake till probably first of July this year, so that's kind of...
I'll put it in perspective, two hundred miles is like going from here to Fort Collins with four guys chucking away. Think about it. County roads are three hundred and eighty. That's like maintaining a road with a couple motor graders to Albuquerque.
And then I'm usually carrying a crosscut saw.
Yeah.
You don't get a chainsaw in Boulder, do you?
And your last item, sir?
So we want to ask the commissioners to modify Resolution seventeen dash oh-nine. And that was the resolution that we enacted after the Junkins fire. We had a, what we call a special order, and you guys had enacted that resolution to close County Road and Forest Road three-eight-six, South Hardscrabble. So that's had a little bit of time. We want you to mod, we would ask that you modify it to open the west end, the top end of that road to all previous uses and leave the bottom closure in effect.
We originally talked about the bottom. What was the reason to leave it in?
We did get through with some number of engineers on the bottom end, and there's big boulders. It's still, we pay the, we have that road under what's called the Schedule A Agreement with the county, so we supply funds through the federal, I think it's through the federal gas tabs. So those funds are provided to the county through the federal government to maintain that road. Well, they'd be in there every week maintaining that right now, so we would like to see things stabilize a little better. We are going to keep looking at the lower end frequently and we'll come back and let you know what we think too. But right now, we ask that you just open the west end and not the east end. And our special order is expired, so that would basically open up that area to the public, back into their public lands with not really any restrictions. I am going to post a whole bunch of warning signs right there at that upper end trailhead because there's still a lot of, lot of movement in that country with soil, rocks, trees. When there's any kind of water event, rain event, things are moving.
Yeah, that's probably worth noting. The washout occurred with a quarter inch of rain because of the forest fire. It made it unstable and it, and it's that way still. And so we could open that road up and you could build it, but you'd be fixing another million, two million dollar road project again. It really washed it out.
Yeah, and so that bottom end, you know, that bottom mile isn't quite as impacted, but it's still, you know, we were thinking, well, maybe we can open that too, but getting in there and looking at it and the amount of material that had moved on it and the rocks that were already...
Just amazing, a drought year, quarter inch of rain.
Yeah, yeah, it did. So if you, we would ask you out that you just modify that resolution to open the top end.
Did Bill Donnelly send you a list of the questions that he had when he thought we were considering opening the bottom half, three-eight-six?
He did not send me that letter, but I visited with him afterwards.
I can forward that to you if you want this for your records.
We're keeping him in touch as well, I know, as you guys are.
Okay. Counselor, what do you think? Do we need to amend that resolution? Do we need to write a new resolution?
I'd have to take a look at it. I don't remember in detail, so I'll take it. But I can have something for you for our next, meetings next week to either amend it or just do a new resolution. So when you're, it's not access to vehicles, it's just foot and horse?
Well, on us, it'll be foot and horseback, but the piece that is on the county is in good shape. It's just the first couple hundred yards off of Highway one sixty-five.
Right.
Going east, that's in really good shape. There's no, it's not impacted by the fire that first little bit. So we're, we're opening it up into the forest, so people will get to the forest.
Okay, but we're not specifying a distance? It's like an open for the first half mile or anything else?
Your whole piece will be open on that west end, so it's going to, we're going to open a piece of ours that we can so we can create somewhere for people to at least park that's safe.
And then there'll be a gate, so you can pass the gate.
Yeah, as I say, originally, I mean, initially, our county road portion will be open down to a, to a, for you, either a gate or boulders or some block.
Yeah, so, but all of that structure will go on Forest Service lands, all those.
And then camping there or no?
Yeah, we're going to allow camping there at the upper end. We've had some discussions if we do open the lower end, we may not allow camping on a certain stretch of that if we ever do because the, just the dangers of water and soil moving are a little more down there. So, but the upper end is not, where the parking lot will be is not impacted by the fire on the upper end.
So Forest Service position changes on the lower end of three-eight-six, we'll be having this conversation again.
Correct.
Yeah, we'll continue to monitor it and to look at it, but right now it's just too unstable in there.
Okay. So, gentlemen, I would guess that we could table this until we get some direction from council, or do you want to approve? Do you guys have a time scheduled? I'm sorry. ASAP, I'm assuming.
For the public, turkey season starts April thirteenth. That, I mean, and that's just, it's purely a public convenience that would, they would appreciate it, but it's not, I mean, it's been closed now for two years, so.
I'll put it down on the agenda for next Tuesday or Wednesday, and I'll have some kind of...
That'll be all right. I hate to, we could make the motion, but then we may have to reword it or change it.
I don't think we could even make the motion because we have this as a discussion, not as a consideration, just a point of order, semantics, but we like to follow the rules.
Sure. So it's appropriate for next meeting or whatever.
Yes, that's all I'm trying to say. And that'll be plenty of time to get those turkey feathers ready to go.
Yeah, great point. Who's really wanting in there?
I don't know.
I think he does.
So, yeah, I think we'll, we can put that on the agenda for second. That'd be great, April second, we'll...
Say the second or the third?
Third.
Well...
Either one.
Oh, I think that's right. We got the second.
Yeah. Could we, Ms. Meredith, put the word consideration instead of discussion?
Thank you.
That's a point well taken, too. We need to be a little more clear about that. We need to be a little more clear about that. So if that works for you guys, we will take that into consideration on April 2nd.
Thank you.
All right, you bet.
Great job, guys.
Yes, sir.
So, so on the, on the lower end and down there off of 386, so, or the center rather, so, because we'll, we'll have people going in there, whether it's open or closed for turkey season, is it gonna be closed to any access at all? Is that the plan?
The county resolution now for that piece of road says you cannot be on that road, and that was similar to what ours was on the forest piece. So that, we're assuming will stay in place and there will be no access on the lower end.
Okay, so no walk, so no walking in?
No walking on the road, no, yeah, they'll need to go to the upper end-
Okay.
-and get in there that way. That's how the current resolution is read, is no, nothing.
All right, thank you, Destiny, welcome. Glad to have you. Come anytime.
Great, thank you.
Always welcome here.
I appreciate that very much, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
By the way, that's a good point. The more you talk to us about, and come and talk to us like when you're burning and stuff, 'cause people call. You've got a fire, the forest on fire.
And I think our folks do a great job. We came through the sheriff's department and they posted on Facebook too, but yeah, we always have to keep you updated as to what we're doing.
If anybody doesn't know, it's kinda cool, but, so Destiny is actually Mike Halpin's daughter, so it's kinda cool.
Oh.
Thank you very much.
That's pretty neat, we have some in County County.
That's right, yeah. With consent, gentlemen, I'd like to take a five-minute recess.
I'll consent.
All right.
We're in recess.
I'm not talking. Thank you. Meeting will reconvene. Let the record show, it is 10:37 a.m. After visiting with Commissioner Counselor Smith, he asked if we would be okay with changing the order of the last two items on the agenda. By consent, gentlemen, are you all right with moving the consideration of the water turning up? One item, as am I. So with that, the next item of business is consideration of obtaining legal counsel concerning water rights. Commissioner Prince, I believe you requested this on the agenda, the floor is yours.
I thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're now going to use a long dissertation, which I have to know to do, and I'll try and speak up 'cause I know I have that issue also. We all know, I think we all know where we are in this process. Just the highlights are behind our back, the Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District filed a amendment to the Blue Line, which encompasses a significant area of Custer County. We had no concept this was being done. Our representatives at the meetings up there, so I had no idea this was being done. Next thing we know, thank you to San Isabel, who I'm pointing to this pool, we learned that a augmentation adjustment was filed with District Two Water Court. When we found out about this, you could've seen smoke coming out of our ears. How could you do this without even discussing it with our water rights holders? So we sent a letter to the water court, we notified Upper Ark that we were extremely disappointed or that we do not support this. We asked them to reconsider, and Chairman Flower spoke to them with us and many of you there. They voted at the following meeting. We asked that they remove Custer County from their augmentation adjustment plan that was submitted, and they, Bill Donnelly made a motion to remove Custer County. It died for lack of a second, so there was not even a discussion. To say that we were upset is beyond words. We all recognize that water is the most important commodity next to air that we have. You die fast without air than water. Water's a close second, okay? And we are very concerned with what the motivations are for Upper Arkansas with the water, that they would have the right. Under this plan, they take over the legal rights to augment the water within this blue plan, this Blue Line plan. It also gives them the right to sell water outside of our county. This can be done once they have this authority by the court. They have the right to do that without any say from us. We turn around and learn that X amount of water just left our valley. This is totally unacceptable, as you all know. We asked them, Commissioner Flower, Chairman Flower, made an appeal to remove us. The next meeting, they voted, and as I said, there was no second. And as I said, I would try not to ramble, but that's where we are today. It was after the meeting, after the vote, many people left. Commissioner Kanda and I stayed to the end, and they asked us to speak. Actually, Commissioner Kanda asked to speak, and he did, and then I was asked to speak, I didn't ask to speak, they asked me to. I think we made it very clear to them that the plan was that Custer County is not gonna roll over and die on this and just say, well, that's the way it is. Understanding that Custer County itself does not have a, Custer County Commissioners, the county itself, doesn't have a dog in its fight because we are not water right holders, and only water right holders have a right to protest and oppose the plan that was submitted from the Upper Arkansas Conservancy District. Fifty, fifty-four? I don't wanna say people, entities, including San Isabel, the town of West Cliff, the Board of County Commissioners, and many of our water rights holders filed a protest with District Two Water Court, saying that we are opposed to the plan, it is not in Custer County's best interest, and we did that because that is a true statement. We feel it is not in our best interest. We wanna control our own water, we don't want them to. So, when, once they failed to move forward on this, Upper Arkansas failing to take us out of the Blue Line adjustment they're trying to make that they filed, and not even after discussion, there was no discussion, it was just, I mean, it's just inconceivable to me. We sat back, I sat back, and I said, what am I gonna do? And I brought it to my commissioner, I said, I said that I feel that we need to continue the fight, which of course, they are totally in favor of. So I would like to move that Custer County, even though we are not involved in the suit itself, 'cause we are not water holders, but we are the, we represent all of you, and every one of us drinks water. I would like to move that Custer County authorize an initial, up to $4,000 to hire an attorney who is versed in the water law to come in and explain to us, hopefully in an open meeting. It will be an open meeting, that I promise, I mean, it's hopefully, in an open meeting. What rights do we have at this point? What can we do to preserve this? Can we, and these are just things to ask, can we form our own Conservancy District? Can we move from Upper Ark to a different one, a more friendly one, a more continued one? Can we just get out of water conservancy altogether? These are things we don't know. We need people who are water rights holders to be involved in this discussion. The three of us, while we've learned a lot about water in the last two months, I venture to say are not experts. I certainly am not. So when Ms. Boogus asked earlier about the person we had, a consultant, that was just to kinda get us up to speed, so we even understood what we're talking about. The term augmentation was even, I think that means trading water, but I didn't really know, and when you try and Google it, it doesn't really explain it all that well. So we had an expert come in and help us with that, and since then, we've had multiple people. There's a gentleman in the room over there, Mr. Gulliver, Terry Gulliver, he's a hydrologist. I've spoken with another hydrologist, Felder, what's his last name?
Terrell.
Thank you, who, I'm sorry, I forgot your last name. Helping us learn what's going on. But the one who really could tell us is an attorney. This is what you can and cannot do. Counselor Smith, bless his heart, is exactly right. You don't want a generalist to do brain surgery and water is brain surgery. So we need a brain surgeon attorney.
I'm sorry I rambled, thank you. I apologize.
I was gonna second that you weren't.
I said I wouldn't do it. I can't help myself, I apologize.
We can still discuss it now.
I'm always talking to a jury, I'm sorry.
It's been moving to second to hire an attorney, a water attorney, with the expenditure of up to $4,000. Discussion?
Yeah, I wanna reiterate a couple things because Jay hit the summary really very well. And unbeknown to a lot of people behind the scenes, each one of us have been working, hammering on the Upper Ark guys specifically, and working on what are options, like the water attorneys that we've had come in, or people that have been advising us. After that meeting, when people left, because I would've been in the same boat had I not known what was going on, because the way they played the game by not seconding the motion and letting it die, you know, what a waste of time. And that didn't give anybody more of a chance to say the same things or reiterate what we said in that first meeting over there. And that's why I took the opportunity and said, well, I'm not gonna leave here, and I asked Jay to stay as well, because we made it clear that it, they were prematurely releasing this water action into the courts before anybody here had an opportunity to show injury or not. And they couldn't stand there and tell us even then, and we've since learned a few things, and I have learned this for the last two weeks of interviewing people, they aren't ready engineering-wise. They're finishing up their engineering and their hydrology as it's been filed. And so that's why we made it very clear that we objected to it, and in fact, hit them with, you know, there's too many things, the single well owner on a 35 acre, the agribusiness that needs replenishment, and how do you do that without storage? You can't do it by saying, I'm releasing water and it goes into the Arkansas somewhere else. We made that clear, you know, if you're gonna file an augmentation plan, and, you know, whether we like it or not, I think we're doomed to agree that we need a real plan, a good plan, that we all can get comfortable with, that doesn't injure us, or we wanna make it clear, they can't legally sell water into, out of the district, but they sure can move it back and forth. So I was upset that a board that's comprised of how many people from Custer County, Fremont County, and Chaffee County, every one of those board members oughta care that when an action occurs, even if it's in Chaffee County and it's not directly hitting us, then we just tend to hide and say, well, it doesn't bother me. It might, 'cause that Chaffee County action might be asking for water, and they're gonna say, yeah, well, just take it out of somewhere in Custer County. That would impact us if we don't have the education and the ability to interact with them. So that's how Jay and I stood up and said, here's what it's all about. And then you can talk about the letter later, but there's a, they have responded since then, just recently, saying, well, okay, maybe, maybe we should, we oughta work with you guys. Maybe we do need to resolve those exact issues that I just spoke of. So we're gonna have to see where that falls out later. We're not, we can't vote to do anything on that right now, 'cause it's not a discussion item, but it certainly is, or a consideration, and so, something we can discuss, we can talk about that later. So I agree with hiring an attorney to look at options, because that's what we, we need information.
Further discussion germane to the point of whether or not to hire an attorney.
Right.
Well done. During none.
Pudgy seed the rabbit.
Yes, sir.
I would commend this initiative as a way of kicking off an assessment as to what citizens or water users group in Custer County could do to manage their own water. I think that you can't really rely on a full-time water lawyer someplace else, they cost an arm and a leg to even listen to for the space of a telephone call. But to form a legal basis for a, a group to manage this in the valley is a great thing.
Okay. And to be clear, we're talking about hiring an attorney to come talk with the commissioners to explore the commissioners' options moving forward, not necessarily the citizens of the county, but as a commission. Okay, yes, ma'am?
I have a colleague in Danberg who practices in this area, that would be interested.
Let's get a PR, point of contact for that.
Other public comment? Yes, sir.
Why, I don't understand where the, it sounds like almost hostility is coming from. I mean, what, why, why are they taking this kind of an action? Any ideas?
Well, it's, it's-
Lot of history.
-all surmising, because no one will actually, in my opinion, state the facts, so we're left to surmise what is or isn't happening, and is it happening in open meetings or behind closed doors? I said on that board as an ex-official member and have done since I was elected, my opinion is that they're certainly operating outside of the Colorado Open Records Act. I don't know how they can get to where they're at today, well, let me rephrase that. I know they cannot get to where they're at today without operating behind closed doors. They will not admit that, but it's clearly, I've read every set of minutes from November, or, sorry, December of 2017, and it is not reflected in the minutes of the actions that they've taken. So they've been challenged on that, obviously that caused some hate and discontent on their part. They don't like to be challenged. They've made that very clear. They operate outside of Robert's Rules of Order. The chairman fairly well has open rein on how those meetings are gonna be conducted, who's gonna speak, who's not gonna speak, and what they're gonna speak about. Clearly, they've made decisions outside of that meeting without a vote of the Board of Directors, because there's no record of those votes, but the decisions were made anyway. So I think, to answer your question, I think they, they've got this angst because we, as a county, have said, hold on, what you're doing is wrong, it doesn't represent our county, we don't trust you, you didn't ask the citizens, you're taking $57,000 of our tax money in 2018, and you're not listening to a darn thing we have to say. And they didn't like hearing that. The commissioners have been at two of those meetings, citizens of the county, water right holders have been at those meetings, and certainly, I think the general consensus would agree that they just don't wanna hear anything we have to say.
Are they doing the same thing to the other counties?
No, the other counties are in support of this augmentation plan because they clearly stand to gain from-
They're at the span.
-water use. Commissioner, Chairman Cinderhoff certainly indicated to me that he was gonna do everything he could to fight for this aug plan. I said, I don't believe I can support that. That was the end of our conversations, and then he turned to Commissioner Kanda and had conversations with him, and we can talk about that later when we get to this letter thing. But I think he realized real quick, he wasn't gonna get anywhere with me. Commissioner Prince has sat in that seat as an ex-official member prior to me being elected, so he's got some experience and background as well. So I don't know if that really answers your question, but it's, it's not an easy question to answer, because nobody will say upfront and honestly, they'll talk about it outside of the meeting, and I've had conversations, Mr. Ruska's had conversations with Board of Director members up there that don't line up with what's going on in that meeting, so. Yes, sir. Public comment?
Jerry?
Well, the nuts and bolts are part of the tans or part of the question there, and the Wet Mountain Valley is the only place left to give water for Upper Ark. They've got all the rest and they need to expand development, but the water will go downhill.
To whom did they report?
No one.
Who?
Legally, I guess they would answer to the, to the Colorado Water, I looked at Jerry Liebengood, who's our water commissioner here. By statute, they have to fall under the guidelines that are set up in statutes, but they don't report to anybody. Yes, ma'am?
Since there's representation to the board that is contrary to the interests of the county, is there any action being taken to look at replacing individuals that currently sit on the board?
Good question. Yes, there is.
How's that process approved?
Chairman Cinderhoff's term, his current term expires May 31st, 2019. In order for someone to be considered for a seat on the Board of Directors, though that name and letters of support need to be submitted to the district, the chief judge of the county that the seat is held in, and there is movement to explore that.
Yeah, every board term member, every member has a term, and they all are appointed by a judge, and they get to be reappointed or challenged by anybody. But they could be recalled.
I don't know if that answered your question, but. So they are a tax-supported district, obviously, from the five counties that are, that are part of that, Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District. So we are in discussion, sir, Mr. Liebengood, of, the motion was to hire a water attorney not to exceed up to $4,000 to explore the options that the commissioners have moving forward in regards to water case 3076. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but, but, go ahead. Do you have any input on whether or not the commissioners should be spending money on hiring an attorney to find out what our options are?
I think it would be in the best interest of the commissioners and the constituents to at least hire an attorney to get that input that you need to make that decision. I really do. You need that expertise that of giving you what your options are, I think.
Personally, I agree. I just, I spend a lot of time probably making rash statements that in a court of law probably wouldn't hold up. So I have my beliefs about this, but that doesn't mean they're legal. That doesn't mean they'd hold legal water. So I think back to another issue we've had here in the last five or six years in this county that involved attorneys and spending a lot of money to fight, to, to settle a lawsuit. And I don't hear a whole lot of positive about that. And I'm talking about the whole.
Suck down the rabbit.
Fiasco down in hell over road rights. It's easy for everybody to get all wound up after the fact, you should have never done that, you should have never spent that kind of money. And I don't want to get into that same situation here. If this community and the constituents, and particularly the water right holders, feel like the commissioners should expend county dollars to do something based on legal advice, then that's fine with me. I don't mind doing that. I just don't want to, as commissioners, don't want to go off on some tangent that we think we should be doing without legal advice and input from the community, which obviously is why most of you are here today. So that's important to me. Yes. Before you speak, ma'am, we need to clear the air. And that would be the pronunciation of your name, because I've heard that about.
My name is pronounced Valda Turods.
Not Valda, not Velda, not Valda. Okay, and the last name?
Turods.
Turods.
I apologize.
No, I'm not, I wasn't talking about.
No, I apologize about the wrong name every single time.
So it is Valda. Okay, yes, ma'am, go ahead. Thank you.
I was wondering if the commission had considered asking someone from Division Two in Pueblo to come up and explain how they would administer some of the potential conflicts that could occur under this augmentation plan. And that, in addition to the attorney information, might be helpful, and that's certainly an inexpensive way to get some.
Government dollars helping us.
Yeah, I don't believe we have. I certainly have not as a commissioner. The burden of proof on all of the conflicts arising out of 3076 will be on the Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District. They're going to have to deal with that. I'm not sure that, because now we're at the hearing phase, I'm not sure the water court would.
I'm not.
There's no way to do that.
It's not water court. I'm thinking of somebody like Tyner or Steve Whitty, somebody from their operation familiar with.
Be very surprised that it's a lawsuit now.
Steve Whitty's retired.
Is he?
Yes, yes. Bill Tyner, of course, is the division manager.
Well, Steve Whitty is retired.
One specific question you could restate, what are your, what would be questions or hypothetically that, that you would feel we need to present here?
So as an example, somebody in a fractured rock setting within the blue line applies for augmentation water. Their well is capable of providing that added pumping, so they're now can do outdoor use, and all of a sudden their neighbor's wells are drying up. How is injury to those neighbors handled with the fact that you have an augmented well pumping?
You ask a $64 question, you really do. Unfortunately, the only, let me use my, excuse my words carefully, ma'am. The only addressed injury in a case like this is to the surface water right holders. And that's unfortunate, that's very unfortunate.
And most of us here are well owners.
Yes, exactly. You're exactly right. And, and so the injury to, to individual domestic well owners is not addressed by the court system. The only rules we have in effect basically to protect well owners is the 600-foot spacing rule. So I, I don't know if Bill Tyner, I won't speak for him, of course, because his pay grade is way above mine. But without some very firm geology and knowing what's going on underneath the, the surface, I don't think that question will be able to be answered.
Don't they throw it, Jerry, at the well owner to prove their injury?
Pardon me?
Don't they throw that burden of proof back onto the well owner? Seems, that's what I've heard. I don't know if that's true.
And how, how are you going to prove injury?
Just say, dig deeper, and if it doesn't work, and you keep going. How, where do you draw the line?
It'd be the burden of that well owner to danger to prove injury, and.
That would be after.
Probably impossible.
That would be after the aug plan is in place. Right now, that burden would be under Upper Ark to show that that type of injury would not occur.
That's right.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting that the opposers are cha, are charged with, I believe the wording is prove potential injury. That is like throwing a dart and seeing where it lands. So I think your point is well taken. I think the citizens of the county need to understand that, that the individual well right permittees, they're not, they're not water right owners, just because they have a well, are probably going to suffer as well as surface water right holders.
Yeah, that's correct.
Uh, yes, sir.
Going back to this gentleman's question about the opposition or the bad feeling about this whole aug plan, I think, you know, the blindside deal was terrible. I was really bad to come up with it and respond to it after the fact, after it's filed. On the surface, it looks like we're going to have to get way more use up there than what we had. We're going to have the option of buy well permits, bill, and then the replacement water goes to the Arkansas. So there's a good reason for coming to that.
Yeah, that's probably, in my opinion, the most poignant part of this entire thing that, that people, probably the average person in this county, I guarantee you, would not understand that. That, that even though the, the augmentation plan is to replace depleted water on consumptive use, it's not going backward the consumptive use occurred. There's no question about that. So if that's the fact, and I believe it is, then, then who gains from these depletions? No one in this county that lives above Grape Creek. And you could even argue, we're at Grape Creek. Well, the blue line, wherever that blue line crosses Grape Creek, anybody above that's not going to gain anything. And so once the water hits Grape Creek, I believe there's only two diversions, right? Two point of, one pointed diversion from the blue line down.
Five.
Five. So those could be protected.
Go ahead, ma'am. Pertain to this conversation, you should all be aware, Wednesday, I was in conversation with both assistant engineers and Bill Tyner, the division engineers, and brought to their attention that the existing plan, in my estimation, and I think I'm right, definitely will not prevent injury to the intervening water right, surface water right on Grape Creek that would be created by issuance of well permits under the current plan submitted by Upper Ark. The assistant engineer has agreed with me, in fact, and is, and will be part of our involvement in the case as protester from Division Two.
Mr. Rusk, would you be comfortable in sharing your conversation with the district water manager about the engineering?
I called Terry Skanga and said, you know, as we prepare, you filed this thing, we don't really know what it is. As we prepare to challenge you, which we will, I'm speaking for myself, but I'd like to see the engineering. He said it's not complete yet. It's been filed and worked, and they don't even know how it's going to work yet. So any, any education you could get on this, legal, water commissioner, Division Two, it's going to be a big deal, all of it you can get, that includes legal.
I have some other comments, but I'm going to reserve those until we move to the second part of this whole discussion concerning the letter we received from their district manager, sorry, the letter Commissioner Kanda received from their district manager. Other discussion, or public comment pertaining to the motion, which is to hire an attorney up to $4,000. Gentlemen, any further discussion?
No, sir.
Mr. Kanda? Proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pos nay?
Motion carries.
Let the record show that the commissioners have the ability to hire an attorney. Thank you. And so Commissioner Prince also asked if we could include in this consideration, because it's not an action item. Chair allowed that to talk about a letter that Commissioner Kanda received via email from their Conservancy District General Manager. Commissioner Kanda, I would defer to you, sir.
Okay. I'll go back to what I said earlier. Before this even came up after that first meeting, I had gotten ahold of Cinderhoff to find out what are the options we have if it gets, because it is filed. And I told him then, you got the, you got the authority right now. You can stop the action, you can modify it, you can change it. And in fact, if there is a better plan in mind, and apparently they didn't, and Randy, you've got the, the history on it, they tried to file at one time a plan that involved the whole valley at one point, and that would have afforded, in their point, from their point of view, storage rights, which would help augment the surface rights that would, that are different than what we currently have. They just washed down into the Arkansas. So I said, well, why didn't you do that? Why are you doing it like you are? And what are our options to do that? And that's when I started looking at, how can we get into this? What, whether they continue that action or not? And that would be to make sure that we are working with those guys, because apparently they're not working with us to try to get a, them to understand how we, we didn't hear anything about what kinds of injuries, and we've been hearing a lot of it right now. There are injuries that are occurring. And you've got a good case even today, Randy, right, on Taylor Creek, that is proof in fact. So that's how the discussion came up. And so let me read the letter that came back after this last meeting, when they bailed out, and then Jay and I stayed and reiterated our position, and, and threw some examples at them, and I'll read that to you.
There you go.
You got it? Oh, it's easier. All right. And the reason it was addressed to me, apparently, is because I stood up and, and hammered him later. Here's, here's the reaction. Dear Mr. Kanda, and this was addressed to all three of us, it wasn't just to me.
Correction, sir.
It was copied to you.
Thank you.
All right. I should say, and their board, they, he also copied it to their board. That's, that's true.
Can you scroll?
Well, I thought that, that's why, maybe it's not.
No.
Does it? There it is, too. So they addressed it to all.
It was addressed to you.
Correct. It was addressed to me and copied to everybody, because I was the guy pushing on. During the Upper Ark's March 14th board, the directors, of directors meeting, discussion took place about the district's augmentation blue line expansion. Although the board was not willing to remove Custer County from this augmentation application, members of the board did express a desire to meet with representatives from Custer County to engage in discussions about the proposed augmentation plan and issues related to potential water right impacts from augmented structures, water, storage, et cetera. That's the first paragraph. Second paragraph is, in this conversation, you and fellow Commissioner Prince were asked to comment on this possibility. You noted that there are several areas that needed discussion, such as augmentation impacts to landowners. That was me.
Correct. I.
Yeah, you, you.
Never said that.
That's right. You didn't say that, I'm sorry. I don't know why he said, and fellow were asked to comment.
Well, read it, and then we can discuss it.
Right. That's good. Such augment, as augmentation impacts to landowners with domestic exempt wells on 35 acre parcels, the potential impacts to groundwater table, the potential to operate the augmentation plan in such a manner that water does not leave Custer County, because that's the big issue. The potential, that's me, I'm sorry. The potential of providing supplemental water to agribusiness, development of storage in Custer County, and the preservation of existing, you're going to turn this up, existing irrigation water in the county. Okay, second, next paragraph, third paragraph. The board met this challenge with a positive response. The district director suggested several citizens from Custer County as appointed by the Board of Commissioners that meet with District Augmentation Blue Line Expansion Committee to undertake the tasks and discussion listed above. We look forward to meet with your committee as soon as possible. It is imperative to resolve not only the issues as noted above, it is equally important to develop a new relationship of trust and openness to resolve all other issues that may arise as we move forward together on all Upper Ark projects that may impact Custer County. This would be a perind for me in the future, probably. This will be a long process, since obtaining a decree will take from two to four years. Please contact me to arrange our first meet. So that, we just, when did we receive this? I didn't even pay attention. Yesterday?
Yesterday. It was prior to that, wasn't it? I mean, look. March 28th.
He had it's 28th on the, there. So to me, that tells me that they were prematurely, now they're thinking about it, right? They were premature in their release of this, and Randy had the same conversation, and I think somebody had mentioned this, maybe somebody else did, that their engineering's not complete. How can that be? Their plan all along, to me, over a two to four year period of time, is to resolve these one-on-one at a time. And that's not the way you do it. You shouldn't be doing that, to me. That's my opinion. And adjust the blue line to make you happy or to you happy? How does that not, you know, to me, that's wrong. And it should have been, it's a, it's a public entity that, that we, we have the right for any inference, just like Tom said earlier. Well, you know, where, where has everybody been? And why, how are they getting away with it behind the scenes? So that's just what the point of discussion on this letter is. I'm not sure what we need to do about it yet. We need to discuss that.
I do.
And he makes some.
That's exactly what we wanted to. Discussion?
Go ahead. That's the letter.
Nice. Now, sometimes I get emotional with things, and I recognize that. What happens if I reach over and put my hand on your arm? Is that? That'll help.
Keep his blood pressure down.
Okay. Here's the way I read this letter. And my blood pressure did go up. After they filed it, after they refused to even discuss removing us, they send us this olive branch saying, oh, now that we still have you under our wing, or we're trying to, and we're not willing to remove you. If they come to us and they said, or if they came to us and said, "We will take you out of the oil plan. Let's do this. Get a group together to discuss it, and then put an oil plan in," I would say, "I'm all in favor of discussion." But this olive branch, to me, is garbage. My feeling is, the three commissioners should sign a letter saying, "Too little, too late. You are adversary, you are not, we are not going to mend fences with you until you do one item and one item only. Remove us from the augmentation plan." And I would be happy to propose a letter for the three of us to sign telling them that this is totally unacceptable, that we as the committee of citizens do whatever you feel is appropriate. But the commissioners will not put a commission together to discuss anything with you until such time as you remove us from your proposed augmentation plan that's in the courts right now. And I'm sustained.
That was good.
Well, I certainly, hold on just a second. I certainly have some response to this as well. My wife says there are times, Mr. Flyer, when you should keep your mouth shut. This is one of them, but I'm not going to. There's a couple of things that, and I want to kind of dissect this letter for clarity, if nothing else. Because I think this goes back to Mr. Jarvis's original question, is where, where does all this come from? How, why is it happening, and so on and so forth? It was clear at the last meeting on February 14th that I will speak for specifically Chairman Cenderhoff was not too impressed with the narrative that I wrote on, read to them on behalf of the commissioners. And subsequent to that, turned to Commissioner Kanda and all of the communications since then have been with Mr. Kanda. It's clear he doesn't want anything to do with Commissioner Prince nor myself. This letter was addressed to Mr. Kanda. I don't have a problem with that. He's welcome to do that. I think there's some subliminal messages going on here. And, and I just don't want to be naive to that. But certainly, I made it clear to Chairman Cenderhoff, both privately and I think by my narrative on behalf of the commissioners, that I wanted to know part of this thing. And it didn't take him long, I think, to approach Mr. Kanda. And, and I know Commissioner Kanda told me he had a phone conversation with Mr. Cenderhoff prior to that meeting on the 14th. And I'm not privy to what that conversation was about. It's not important. But certainly, I think it was apparent that Chairman Cenderhoff thought it was time to go a different direction. So, I look at this letter, and there's some things that concern me that during this March 14th meeting discussion took place about the district's augmentation blue line expansion. Not the creation of the blue line, but to expand a blue line. Now, the only blue line on the table for Custer County or the other counties involved is that blue line right there. There's not an existing blue line in Custer County. So, if you talk about a blue line, we have to be assuming that's the line we're talking about. So, a blue line expansion committee means they have a group of people. I've got the names of the board of directors that are on that committee, that they're already moving forward to expand a blue line that's not even existent. That irritates me beyond normal English words. And then there's a statement in here, and I want to clarify this because I was not there. I had another appointment in Pontia Springs at 3:30, so I left. It says in this conversation, "You and fellow Commissioner Prince were asked to comment on this possibility." I don't believe that's true. Now, would you say then, if this letter's from Skanga, would you assume that the words, "You and fellow Commissioner Prince were asked to comment," who did that request come from? I would assume it meant the board of directors asked for these two commissioners to comment. So, I'm going to ask both of you, did Chairman Cenderhoff ask you to comment late in the meeting?
No. I asked him.
Did he ask you, sir? Commissioner, or Chairman Cenderhoff? He did not. Commissioner Kanda asked if he could say something. Cenderhoff allowed him. And then Commissioner Kanda said, "Jay, would you like to say something?" And I think I said something, in fact, I'm really prepared.
One plan.
But I would. This is not true.
That's not true.
And there were some people who were sitting.
I think you stayed there and listened to it.
Balda, pronounced properly, I hope, was there.
I think I was the only one.
I got a, I mean, I would just tell you, I was up and I, I read on the riot app. I told them they had some hell of, excuse my French, some heck of a nerve
You did.
for what they did when they had just finished a very long dissertation from their attorney on conflict of interest. Hang on one second. Claiming that their chairman, Mr. Cenderhoff, had no conflict of interest. And I corrected him, saying, yes, he has a major conflict of interest. And I explained what that was. And I told them that I think they should be ashamed of themselves. And I, I don't even remember what I said because I was on a roll. But I was in no way cooperative.
Was it televised?
Wait a minute.
Let him finish. Go ahead. I'm done.
Okay. Okay, then, the point that I'm going to make, the reason I asked for it, because I got thrown under the bus because of the discussions I'd had, regardless of how they vote, what they're doing, we got it. We, we exist, we're a member. We need to figure out how to get information back and forth and get it to our citizens. That's the whole point. And that's the point that I made with it. And then Jay got up and reiterated, and I even said about being blindsided. We didn't have a clue they were going to file then, at all. And so, so we made that point. And then, then they decided, okay, maybe in retrospect, we'd better do some thinking as what this comes across as. And maybe they're gaming. Okay, next.
Balda and I did stay to the end. There were only six people left in the audience, two people from Canyon City, the commissioners and ourselves. And when Commissioner Prince stood up, part of what he said is what he just said about, "We will talk with you after you withdraw us from this plan. And at that point, we would be happy to talk with you." Reflecting on the letter that you received, they're discounting that. They're trying to put Commissioner Prince in with you on this. He was very clear that he, that he wanted to talk with them if and only if they withdrew that. It's not reflected in that letter at all. That letter is misleading based on what I observed at the end of those, at the end of that meeting. It does not represent what I heard Commissioner Prince say.
Yes, sir. Isn't this kind of a two-part deal? Where they're overlaying Custer County's planning and zoning for increased density? And we already have our, we don't need Upper Arx then arbitrarily move the blue line? The water issue is one thing, and the changing of our planning and zoning laws is clearly another. I think.
They can't change. You're right.
Clearly may, need to make a stand on that as well.
Okay, good. Mr. Prince? If I could ask about that, your point is well taken, and I made this point. And when I alluded just a moment ago about conflict of interest, that's exactly where I went with that. What I said was that Mr. Cenderhoff is a land developer. And the first thing anybody comes in to our planning committee and says, "I'm interested in forming a subdivision," the first thing they ask is, "Where's the water coming from? In that blue line proposed, if it's, if it's put in place, the, the answer is, "Oh, I'll just augment it in. I'll buy it, whatever." Without it, the subdivision fails for lack of water. So, there is an inherent conflict with Commissioner Cenderhoff. Your point is very well taken. This is a planning and zoning issue as much as it is an, and I'm using the term agriculture for farming and ranching and all of it. It is an agricultural issue, but it is as much a planning and zoning committee issue on how are we going to develop our county? And I think this ties in very, very clearly with the prosperity or the economic development plan that we're just getting ready to unroll next month. It'll be approved hopefully by the commission here. And it came out very clearly that the people in this county want this county to remain what it is, the same field. And if we start allowing augmentation of, of water into multiple subdivisions, then the, our, our communities are going to change. And that is something that we need to plan for, the commissioners. And that's what planning and zoning does. But your answer is very well taken. It is not just agriculture. It is the planning of our future that this is part of also. Go ahead.
The other thing, I've done a little checking with people. Part of the board members on Upper Arx are, have their own planned subdivisions or in need of water for those. And the other comment, I can't help but not make this one. The greatest thing for longevity of any well in this entire area, because we can't tell where the water veins go here, yet to help every well owner is the agricultural area issue.
Right. Your point about planning and zoning is, is also a fairly poignant point. However, the one thing I give Upper Arx credit for, man, they are not stupid. That is a well-oiled machine from years of practice up there. The, one of the first things they said early in this thing, Skanga said it, "US county commissioners need to be concerned about land use, and you leave the water use up to us." Legally, there's a lot to be said about that. See? We can control land use. We can't control water use. Because we're on water rights. We can't even argue the case. So, they're not stupid by any means. They, they understand that. And so, with that being said, I also want to tell you that April the 15th in the evening, no, I'm sorry, April 15th during the day, and April 16th during the evening, maybe Commissioner Prince could get those times, the planning commission is, has a meeting scheduled to look at land use again in this county beyond the five zones that we have.
130.
130 on the 15th and 6 to 8 on the 16th.
Correct.
So, they, they want to meet and start having discussion and community input about where we want this county to go in land use. And whatever recommendations they come up with, if they're anything different than what's on the books now, they will eventually bring those to the commissioners for consideration. But those are, they really hope that they can get some citizenry input on, on those topics. I, I don't, I better not say what those topics are because it's not my place and that agenda hasn't been ready. Commissioner Kanda?
Yeah, I want to talk to you. I want to talk to you as a commissioner and as a water use holder, right, of water rights, the beneficial use of water. I own two. And it impacts me. So, it's a, it's a fine line we have to walk. We could be in a county with all the water in the world, and you're still, what governs growth is the county commissioners and what you approve and what you don't approve. And we listen to the, our constituency. And so, here's the fine line. We got a growth plan, a prosperity plan that depends on water. Part of it does. And part of that simple growth, we want to maintain our, our lifestyle the way it is. Yet, we heard from you guys, the citizens of the county, and we all participate, a lot of us participate in that, that we want to be, have a way of keeping our kids here, coming back. We want to keep the branches where they are and viable. And that's some of the dilemma and that kind of thing. So, and in the end, the three of us have difficult decisions to make. When somebody comes, we don't have to approve a PUD just because there's water. And we don't have to approve a subdivision. And we don't have to approve a industrial park or someplace like the town wants to have some use in here. But we've got to understand tourism depends on water, too. But how far do we go? And it's, and it is tough. And that's what we listen to, is you all. And we've heard a lot of, sort of, conflict here with we say some things emotionally, and it's, we've got to sit back and stand back and say, well, we need some growth of some kind in order to keep the amenities we got. We've got, we've got bros to maintain, clear the Albuquerque, yet we don't have the money to maintain every one of them. That kind of thought, as well as what the citizens want to have, and our views of what limited growth means. I, I look at it as controlled growth. And so, the water thing, yeah, but we can't use the water as the tool. We could say flat out, we don't want any growth at all if we want to. And doesn't matter how much water's left. Right now, I don't think we've got, what, 3,000 residences yet that could be drilling a well?
Undeveloped lots.
Undeveloped lots. I don't even know what that means yet, from an impact point of view. Jerry might have a better view of that. But those are on the books, and that's according to the zoning as we know it now. And thank heavens, our forefathers had the insight to say, and the county modified what the state statute says, you know? The state statute, I think, lets you have three residences in total on a parcel. And the county limited that. One well, three things. You can't have a house with a kitchen in it, blah, 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 whatever those rules are. Those are our rules. And we can modify that to, to control the growth. So, it is, it is a tough one. And, and I don't want to hide my head in the sand when they've already got a filing over there. And I'm going to fight them and understand them to, to whatever end it takes, even if it's by myself going over there and saying, well, all right, so where are you on it? What do I need to get back into here as a citizen? So, so we've got to, we've got to not let our emotions kill us and cut off our nose in spite of our face. But we, I welcome the insight from the lawyer, any options we have to consider. And so should every agricultural business owner and surface right person. Because, and then we team up with the groundwater people. I mean, you know, it all impacts, it's just like we've heard. And I, I really appreciate the turnout here that, that helps us stand tall, both on the growth side, as well as the limited growth, as well as the water rights issue. Thanks.
Okay, I would like to comment. On your 3,000 dwell, potential dwellings here, you can compute two acre feet how much water each one of those will take individually, and you're a single, single person. And do your math. And those numbers will soon make you realize it's not there.
You know what? John, you brought up a very good point, and I asked that exact question. What is the loss on the residential well? When you pull it out of the ground, you use it, and you throw it back into your septic tank, and there's evaporation that occurs, there's a, whatever that hydraulic, and I bet you Balda knows the number. But for 100, they told, the numbers I got, for 100 residences, it's 10 acre feet that they have to augment back. And out of, through the year, they, they told me, again, the engineer that I asked over there, said during the normal year, the county puts down the Grape Creek between 7,000 and 25,000 acre feet that gets out, you know, just washes out of the county anyway. And that's because of use in the wearing time. You don't get a lot of use out of it, all the kind, things like that. So, you could take the 3,000 times the 10 acre feet. We divided, got 100, 100 homes and come up with, I don't know. Go through the math, I did, I don't have it with me. But it's a few hundred acre feet, like you said, of consumption of use off. That what we can't have is if that's the case, that's what's been approved already. We can control, right now, with our zoning, it's going to limit just that one well. Now, but you'd have three septic systems so that you'd get more use out of it. So, you're right.
The argument I have on this is, most, all of the septic systems that you're trying to claim return flow on will never make it to anywhere.
That's right.
The other thing, if you break that down to a single family, a single person household, 60 to 80 gallons a day, and do your math, and then multiply 365, and then your numbers, you will, you will come up with an incredible amount of acre footage that you're pulling out of the ground.
And you don't know, it doesn't go anywhere once it's into the septic system.
This other, after it gets on the surface, that's fertilizer. It's, you're taking water out of the ground and she's going to lose. It's, you're taking water out of the ground and she's going to lose her well, he's going to lose his well.
Yeah, the augment calls for augmenting wells at a tenth of an acre foot. That's 35,000 gallons. So again, get the calculator out. If we have 3,000 undeveloped lots in the county, nobody could say if and when those are going to be developed, but I would guess the majority of those undeveloped lots lie east of Grape Creek, in my opinion. So.
That, if you do the gallons, you should like you buy water from Upper. On a single family, it will not make two years of water for that individually if they got the real volume of water.
And the augmentation plan, augmented water would be for.
Imperatorily.
So it's for the rest of the life of that property.
Right.
They're going to augment it one time for 35,000 gallons.
I know on wells that I pull for stock water wells, some of them will last 60 feet of static level to this point. So just with the wells we have.
I want to follow up on my thoughts about this letter. Yeah, I'm going to direct this to you eventually because I'm a little confused. Skanga says in the second sentence, he says, you obviously talking about Commissioner Canada, you noted that there are several areas that need discussion. This is the point I want to bring up, such as augmentation impacts to landowners with domestic exempt wells on 35 acre parcels. I think I get that, but he certainly doesn't talk about the impact on anybody less than 35 acres.
Right.
Which are probably hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of wells in this county.
Right.
Our issue's not with 35 acre parcels as far as potential injury and potential pressure on land use. I don't think. I mean, it would be included to that, but obviously the state has recognized and they continue to believe that giving well permits on 35 acres is not going to cause an issue. I take exception to that. Eventually, I think it's going to catch up with us. But Skanga certainly doesn't talk about any two, five, 10 acre parcels which were inundated with. So I just, I thought it was interesting that he mentioned exempt 35 acre wells.
I think the only reason he did that is because that's what I mentioned and he's trying to tie it. But then he says et cetera, because I did say there are other issues. We don't know what the impacts are. I mean, there's lots of things that this thing, we're in the dark about, period. Like you brought up.
My comment was, I don't want to discuss this until you remove Custer County from the augplant. Then let's sit down and let's discuss all of this. This was nonsense. You have a question.
Okay, hold on just a second, sir, and I'll get right to you. He goes on to say, "The district directors suggested several citizens from Custer County as appointed by the Board of Commissioners meet with the district's augmentation blue line expansion committee." He did in fact say that, no question about that. My point is, I agree with Commissioner Prince. I certainly will not serve on an augmentation blue line expansion committee and I won't be recommending anyone else to do that either. Mr. Ewing, yes, sir?
Yes, I wanted to comment as ordinary citizen that seems to me that any kind of response to this letter, other than the harsh tone that Commissioner Prince indicates, would be an acquiescence to our being rolled over. So I would encourage the commissioners with haste to make that posture clear for your constituents.
Okay, point well taken. That being said, Ms. Meredith, with consent by the commissioners, I don't need consent, but nonetheless, I would request that you also add on August 2nd, consideration of drafting a response to.
April.
April, sorry. What did I say?
March.
Consideration of a response letter to Upper Arkansas Water Concerning District. Are you okay if I write something for discussion at that morning?
I would love to see that, yes. And Commissioner Canada had to comment. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I want to correct something you just said. Because it was inaccurate. They, from the way I interpret this, they're not asking us to serve on their blue line committee. They're asking a group of commissioners or people from the citizens from the county to go over there and fight them or discuss it. Unless, I'm going to put my words in it because I want to fight them with facts. And you show me why it's not going to impact me as a water owner. So that's what it means.
All right, so let me expand.
If they want to talk to us.
And here's why I said that. He does say specifically, "Suggested several citizens from Custer County as appointed by the Board of Commissioners." The second or the first sentence in the last paragraph says, "We look forward to meet with your committee as soon as possible." You can say whatever you want. He expects us to appoint a committee to go up there and sit with him and that doesn't fly. It's not a group of citizens. They wanted a committee. I will go in turn, right here in the front first.
That was the offer that was made.
What was the offer?
The offer was that there would be a small group of people that Commissioner Canada could interact with them. I did not hear him say expansion of a blue line committee. He did suggest a small committee of people. My experience is having a small committee of our people meet with a small committee of their people plays right into what they do. They're trying to sort us off from the herd. It should be an open, public. If they're going to do it at all, everybody should be at the table.
But my point was that he didn't expect just some citizens. He references a committee from Custer County to meet with their blue line expansion committee, not to be a part of it, to meet with them. That's all I'm saying.
That's, and that's true.
We'll go in the back, Valda, and then I'll get right to you.
And my whole opinion of it, the committee would be, it's a token that means nothing, that has no power. It would be a total waste of time.
Right. Yes, yes ma'am.
And to build on that, it's premature in the absence of any of their science or engineering experts.
Right.
Yeah. Commissioner Canada, with all respect, mentioned, you know, we've got to be careful what we don't operate on emotion. I'll get emotional about this and won't apologize for it. I may say stupid stuff while I'm emotional, but this gets me fired up. I just don't like their whole operation. Now, is part of the way they act in response to how we or how I personally, yeah, probably, probably have. I don't ever hear anybody get up and tell that board of directors that they don't like what's being done. Nobody's ever challenged them while I've been on that board.
Thank you.
And so I'm sure part of it is, I don't want to say hour and throw a blanket over these guys, but the counties may be at fault for firing up some of this. But I make no apologies for that either. You, blaming you. Blaming you.
Yeah, he got pretty vicious, didn't he?
So I am passionate about this issue. I mean, beyond words. How dare they go behind your back and take control of our water because it hasn't been said this morning, but I'm going to say it right now, if that plan is approved, they have the right to move our water outside of Custer County, sell it and buffer their coffers of which they have a nest egg of over $2 million bucks sitting in the bank right at this moment. So yes, I care very much about this. I care about his water, your water, his water and everybody else's water in this county. And I'm not going to go down without a fight.
And that's good to see. But recognize any water owner can sell the water out of this county. We just, we need something to help us fight it.
And therein lies the initial discussion of, let's get someone here who can tell us legally what is our rights.
What are the options? Because it's bigger than Upper Ark, I think.
It's, yeah. Further public comment, yes ma'am?
One other thing, as you talk with your water attorneys, there are options to form a sub-district and it would be useful to find out what structures, what water rights could come with the formation of a separate sub-district.
Okay, I think those would be pertinent questions.
Obviously. And just calling the, Mr. Culver is a hydrologist, wasn't here when I mentioned you earlier today when we met last week. But his comment to me, which I think is very pertinent, and I'm not a water person, I'm just, I'm in my diapers and water. I'm learning, okay? That's what I'm trying to say. But what I mean by that is, one of the questions, which obvious is, we don't even know what we have. We don't know what's down there. We need to figure out if we can, what are we dealing with? And that just makes perfectly good sense to me. So I just wanted to make that comment. This is all, I mean, this is not a question for today and Upper Ark today. This is for the future of Custer County. And I don't mean to be here waving the flag rally, but this is really, really important stuff. And Mr. Liva Katsuka said as if he said yes, so I'm assuming he's not fighting me on it.
Okay, further public comment before we move on, we have one more agenda item to deal with before we, there'll be another public comment session at the end of the meeting, prior to the end of the meeting. Thank you guys for your input. We appreciate it.
Thanks a lot.
Comment and supporting us.
Yes, so a couple of questions. I've got one question for the group and as well as the commissioners. If we in fact employ an attorney, commissioners, I would ask you this, it's really not a public question. Do you want to handle that during a regularly scheduled commissioner meeting? Or would you prefer to handle any conversation with an attorney during a workshop?
Well, two points. Are we asking more than one to get the best attorney? Are we treating it like a contract? And secondly, we probably should handle it.
I respond to both of those. Yours first, Bill. I have the utmost faith in our counsel to advise us on what's the way, which way to go.
Okay, good.
Stop it right there. Whatever Clay says to me is what I want to do. My second point is, I would prefer to do this in a workshop with discussion so that I don't feel that there are other agenda items I have to get through, I'm rushed.
Much more people that come in a different.
So yes, I personally would prefer it in a workshop so that the public certainly is invited, but we don't feel that we have six more agenda items to fill that day.
We can address that then when we do actually, if we do decide to hire an attorney, we can do that. Yes, ma'am.
Do you not have to put it out to bid?
No, $5,000 or more.
Is that for professional services?
So Commissioner or Counselor Smith, you would engage in trying to determine who you might recommend to us?
Well, I already talked to Randy Rusk. He's used the same person for 25 years and that lawyer, who's out of Colorado Springs, represents a lot of other people invested in water rights and.
He certainly would know.
And I think, and what Randy told me was that this person knows his water law, would not necessarily be the best choice if there was actually some kind of a courtroom proceeding, but you're not at that point and the county wouldn't really be involved in that as a party anyway. So he's attorney is a gentleman named Steve Munson out of Colorado Springs and I would certainly defer to him. The water lawyers I knew have all died. I don't know how that happened.
I want to throw out one more thing.
Do they go through meetings like this?
The courts have reached back out to all the opposers and requested some input on the best dates for the first hearing on case 3076. I personally responded back and that was, the dates they have now narrowed it down to are May 8th, May 15th, May 22nd, May 29th. Those are all seven days apart. And then June 5th. This is for the status conference on 3076. So if you're interested, if you're an opposer, you should have gotten this. But if not, I can circulate those dates and they did a survey. I want to, I'd be remiss, I'd have to go back a few emails to find out what the survey actually was. But anyway, the status conference for this case is pending, the court's selecting a date.
And that's in Gunnison, right?
No, that is in Pueblo.
Oh, okay.
Division 2 Water Court. And it'll actually start, it looks like it will start maybe with the referee, but.
So you'll send out some.
I can, yes. And if, we could put that on the county website. I've got a fairly extensive distribution list, but that's no guarantee that you're on it either. So if you'd like to be on that, if you'll just jot me your email down, you're not on my list either. So if you guys want to do that before you leave today, I'll add you to that distribution list.
I'd also like to see it on the.
County website, please. Can you just mention it to Vernon and Evan, get back with this and we'll.
Oh, once we have a date.
Oh, once we have a date, yeah. So there's five dates that they're considering right now. Anything else, gentlemen, on the water issue before we move on to the final public comment? Okay, public comment, any and every, yes, sir?
Wait a minute, we got another agenda item.
Oh, that's right. Good night. Go ahead, sir. Does it pertain to water?
Was your question to pick a date that you would have your initial conference with them?
It's when they're going to schedule the first status conference. They've reached out to everybody and said, what date would you like to have it on? Not just me, I'm assuming everybody.
Okay. And there would probably be no reason to pick any other date other than the very latest one, don't, wouldn't you think?
It's a good point. I went through my calendar, June 5th does not work for these commissioners because we have a condo scheduled down. This went to 32 plus about 12 more, so it was to the opposers. So they're going to select a date based on the input they get through that survey. Because I had an opposer email me and said, what am I supposed to do with this email? I said, you respond, jump online, get on that survey and complete it. Let me see if I can find it.
And give your legal counsel more time to prepare.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't come up on the other dates myself.
Yeah. I had two conflicts. That's how I responded. I can't speak to anybody else, but let me see if I can find that.
Who's sticky note come from also?
I think she wrote it. Oh, Bill wrote it, okay.
325,850 gallons in an acre foot of water.
There's 300 and how many thousand?
325,000.
Good.
Rough, give or take a few, 850 gallons in one acre foot of water.
Okay, good.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
But Jerry, does that include if they're growing marijuana? Because think about that.
No. This is just a metric. This has nothing to do with what you're doing with.
No, but I'm saying, what about the water usage if somebody comes in on a one acre lot and starts growing marijuana?
Oh, yeah, that's another consideration.
No, no, but look at the water intake on that.
Right. He was just asking.
I was just asking what an acre foot, how many gallons in an acre foot, that's all I care about.
Yeah. The largest consumer of water that's an agricultural crop is corn. I can't speak to marijuana because I don't know nothing about that.
Might be more.
But we can find out.
It's very thirsty. And it uses a lot of.
Live in your experience. How do you know that?
3,000 homes, as John alluded to, 60, just 60 gallons a day in a year, that's 66 million gallons a week.
Right. And currently, we didn't say this today, currently Upper Ark owns 99 acre feet. So you divide that by a tenth of an acre foot, that's 1,000 homes. That's it.
They own 99 acre foot of water.
Sorry, I did not clarify that. Within our district, within the blue line portion of Custer County.
That they generate from this county. Greatly, greatly larger numbers that they, that they own themselves in other basins.
And they can transfer water up here to satisfy water augplants, correct?
Correct.
Because it doesn't have anything to do with Custer County. Where does that satisfy come on the Arkansas River? Doesn't have anything to do with Custer County, so.
That 60 to 80 gallons per single person is not, includes, you can go online and find out when a horse takes everything onto it.
It's consumptive use.
That provides a lot.
It's consumptive use on whatever you're doing with.
Okay, we're going to move on. I know the only reason you guys came to this meeting was our last agenda item, so.
Wilson did.
All right, thank you. So we have one more agenda item. And Sheriff Farley, getting ready to turn the floor over to you and Mr. Prince, and that is a consideration of ordinance 19-01 regulating marijuana.
We have to listen to Clint.
Oh, well, I don't know about that. You may not have to. So with that, we will move forward. Would you like to come up? And I'm going to turn the floor over to Commissioner Prince because he was the one that volunteered to meet with some concerned citizens and review and possibly amend the marijuana ordinance 19-01. Commissioner Prince?
Thanks, sir. I'll try not to argue too much, but I promise anything. As you know, we had a group of concerned citizens who came in when we were getting ready to pass this ordinance on the second reading a couple of weeks ago because they felt that it unjustly impacted their right for their personal recreational marijuana and in one case as a marijuana forgery. I'd like to just publicly state, I am totally, totally opposed to any marijuana whatsoever, any shape, form, or whatever. I just want to publicly state that has nothing to do with what I'm about to say.
I'm going to try to hold you to that, sir.
You will never see me with marijuana, I promise. Okay, the other side of this is, they did, they did voice some concerns that I felt they had no, they had no input into this ordinance. The ordinance was originally promulgated because the sheriff wanted, and I don't want to speak up if I put, I don't mean to put words in your mouth, wanted more teeth to deal with these larger marijuana grows that we have. So he asked counsel to prepare something. Counsel did. And during the second reading, this group came and said, whoa, this is impacting us very adversely. I offered to meet with them and I did on several occasions, several of them you were there, sheriff, some of whom you were not. They expressed to me that, in fact, they offered to make what we were proposing much stricter in some areas. They offered to register themselves as in-home growers for personal use and on and on. So they were trying to be responsible, if that's possible, with marijuana. I don't even know. Anyway, bottom line was, we were changing, the suggestion from the sheriff was to change the ordinance, which allows six plants per person in each resident to 12 plants per household. Is that right?
Correct.
Right. The issue was, I had never even seen a plant growing, I know you have, because the chairman. We had it in a tiny 10 by 10 area and apparently that wouldn't even hold one plant. So the suggestion that they could have up to 12 plants was just not feasible. I met with them, I met with the sheriff and I said, Sheriff, what they're suggesting, I made the changes that they suggested. I gave it to the sheriff. Sheriff's met with us and said, the real question was, Sheriff, can you live with this? Is this going to accomplish what you want to do and still be within the confines of the law? And the sheriff came and said, yes. So I made some modifications to 19-1 and sent it to counsel, which the sheriff has looked at, I've looked at, counsel modified some of the things that I changed and I appreciate that. And I think, Sheriff, why don't you speak about if you feel this accomplishes what you want to do? Because I felt that they were comfortable, they thanked us for hearing your voice.
Sure. So, so, yeah, I think, and I think you have the right interpretation or the right representation of what happened. So in the, in the readings, they did bring up a few points that were valid, I thought, whether I agree or disagree. Again, with, with the way the law is written is irrelevant.
Right.
That's the way the law is. And so, so, yeah, I think it does basically meet those parameters. We did change some language. I mean, again, the, for example, the size of the building really has, our building rather, you know, really has no effect on how we go about doing our job, whether it's a 40,000, you know, cubic feet building or 100 cubic feet building, it's really relevant. So that doesn't affect us. Some of the wording, and I think that the key component here is, is right, that this ordinance doesn't go after the medical marijuana industry and caregivers and that type of thing. And so we did rewrite it to get that out of there because, again, that's, that's controlled and regulated through the state and how they go about doing that. So that doesn't really negatively affect the way we go about doing our job. So I do think that in the end, the ordinance is, is going to allow us to be as effective as we can be and won't have any negative effects on, on us. And if it does allow folks that are trying to do it in the right way and grow for personal, you know, personal use, be it medical or recreational, it allows them to still do that within the confines of the, of the Constitution.
Can you speak to your concern about the use of compressed flammable liquids?
Yeah, so when you start talking about, and that was one of the changes that I suggested we made because, I'm sorry.
I was kind of surprised you took that out.
And the only reason I did is because we've, we've had two or three questions come up also, now I can't use propane to heat a building where I'm growing marijuana in or whatnot, that's going to, and so, so those questions are going to come up and, and that was not the intent of that section. That section there is, when they're, when they're trying to strip the THC out of marijuana to, to make edibles and, and those types of, I don't know. Products, that's, yeah, or goodies, yeah, that type of product. That's a very delicate process and can be extremely dangerous if not done properly. And so that was the entire, I believe it's section five, or is it section five?
I think so.
So that was the, the intent of that section was to say, listen, so you cannot process marijuana with the use of flammable liquids. It might be seven, I don't recall. It is five, okay. So the whole point there is that we don't want you processing marijuana with flammable liquids, meaning butane, or they do use propane a little bit, but butane is the primary sub, or alcohol. And so we, there's been some communities that have had pretty large explosions and fires because of that, and people are doing it without the proper ventilation and so forth. So that addresses it without, because I don't believe they really use propane to strip marijuana. That's, I mean, you want to talk about asking for an explosion, but I'm never surprised by some of the things we see. But I do, I don't see the point in putting in the growing or cultivating because they're not, that's just, who cares what they're heating their building with to grow it or to cultivate it, it's that processing point.
I thought it was part of the processing, so I'm fine.
Yeah, so that's the only reason I made that suggestion, is to eliminate, and what I was speaking to is, in that section, we eliminated growing and cultivating and only the processing. Because that's where, that's where the true danger comes in and that's the point of that section.
So part one, section four.
Four.
Oh, I'm sorry, section five.
Five, sorry.
Use compressed flammable gas products.
Correct, correct.
You're saying that maybe we need to delete the words growing and cultivating?
That was my suggestion, yes, sir.
And then leave it. Today without that.
Pardon?
That's out, that wouldn't read the, I'll read the one that Meredith gave us today. The new one she handed to you.
Okay, okay. Because I wanted to show you something as well, Commissioner Prince, let me get it. So when you sent and mentioned the red line, I don't know if I ever showed you this, that is what my red line version looked like, literally had these red lines in the left column.
That, there's an issue because I use MS Word and I use a review, they actually put the lines through it.
Right, that's what I thought you intended, so.
But that, if you looked at mine, that's how it looked, I don't know what.
That's all I've ever seen, yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, so page.
You were very misled by me unintentionally.
Yeah, I get that, yeah. So maybe, maybe used in the processing of marijuana.
Right.
Correct. Which says it may not be used, right?
But it does not say that.
Says forbidden from being used.
No.
The prohib, prohibition of compressed gas.
Tell me the.
Top of page four.
Oh.
Of the new one, the one Meredith gave us today.
Prohibits the use of compressed gas for the processing, right? Compressed gas or liquid.
I was saying, bottom of page three, I'm sorry.
Bottom of page three.
This is, I'm looking at the one.
Yeah, no compressed flammable gas.
Flammable gas, butane is like butane, or flammable liquid may be used for the, in the processing of marijuana.
Yeah.
Right, in the processing.
Processing, correct. Because if not, you're going to get calls and I'm going to get calls about why they can't use propane to heat the building.
Right.
That's what I was trying, which who cares? That's not, that's not the hazard. Because they're going to use the propane not only, especially in the grows.
No issue.
That have a lot of, they're going to be generating CO2, which uses propane, they're going to be heating with propane.
So was there something else that you changed besides that?
Yes.
Okay.
I took out all reference to caregivers because caregiver was not something that Sheriff, please jump in, I don't want to put words in your mouth. Sheriff Farley was not interested in that and he and I, we discussed it, felt that the state law concerning caregivers was sufficient. So we took out caregivers. The other thing was enclosed versus outside. It still had to be enclosed, but it did not have to be inside the residence. We originally said it had to be inside the residence. Now we said you could do it in a greenhouse or something, provide a side view of the public and there are locks on the doors to keep kids out and that kind of stuff. Those were the changes that I remember.
Typical verbiage that falls within standard.
If, if a person has a license from the state of Colorado to grow medical marijuana or grow marijuana to give to.
Yeah.
People that think they need it.
Like a caregiver or so, or so forth, yes.
That's a licensed deal.
It is.
Is there a number of patients that an individual caregiver can have?
Yes.
Do you know what that number is right off?
So let me think, it's, I'll have to figure out the plants and then go back. So they're limited to 99 plants as a caregiver and it's like, it's like 20, 24, no, 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 it's fewer than that, it's maybe 18 patients. I don't recall off the top of my head. Because again, we don't really enforce the laws that have to do with that, other than just reviewing it. If we know somebody's growing, you know, is licensed to grow, we don't really get in their business much unless it's obvious they have far more than 99 plants.
Anything in this amended document that concerns you?
No, I think, I mean, we've gone over it and changed some stuff out, as Mr. Prince alluded to. So the group that we worked with, they actually proposed several things that I had to say, no, 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 we can't do that, that's against the law, we cannot make you register. Because they, they literally did, they said, listen, let's have everybody that grows marijuana just register with you and then you'll know.
Yeah.
And I said, well, we can't do that, that's, that's against your rights and, and not only that, but you may not care that people know, but there may be some people that do and they don't advertise it. I can assure you, there are people in, in Custer County that grow marijuana and use it for personal, you know, enjoyment or for treating themselves and they don't want anybody to know. And so we want to honor their privacy and respect that. And so they were like, oh, well, we didn't think about that. So some things like that, that they just offered up that, so I mean, I mean, it wasn't good faith, some of the proposals they made, there were some things that they proposed were like, no, no, we, we're leaving that in and stuff. And so it was a good, I thought it was a pretty good compromise. It was very civil, very, more so than I anticipated, but it was good and I thought everybody came out of it on the same page.
Good. Well, certainly appreciate Commissioner Prince's work on meeting with those folks.
Yeah, I appreciate your, Prince, your, your work on it.
Sergeant.
Buck. Yep, sir.
Any other high points that you think of?
No, sir, I'm satisfied.
Counsel, where do you think we go from here? We're treating this as an amended resolution?
Well, the one thing I, I was kind of trapped in here during that, that long discussion about the water. I wanted to get back and get Title 30 and look, I even sent an email to Meredith, but I don't think she saw it. Could you bring me Title 30 back there?
Do you have a question for him? Would you like us to take a couple minute break? I could use one.
Sure, that's fine.
Consent, gentlemen, just three or four minutes, we'll try to.
Can you order a pizza, please?
No, that's the Justice Department.
I got a question for you.
Meeting will reconvene 12:17 PM. Mr. Candy, you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a couple of things and let, listen here and then we're ready to go. Under the law, Clint, can a county be more restrictive than the state law?
Yes.
Right.
Without invading the constitutional rights.
Right, right. So that was what I want to make sure, and we can either be more lenient or more, we got to guard against being more, what is it, abundant or whatever we want to say.
Can't be more lenient.
That's right. We can be more lenient.
No.
Cannot.
Cannot, other than what the Constitution says, right?
Right.
Okay, that's what I want to make.
Well, other than what the law says, correct? When it comes to marijuana laws, we can't supersede those.
So my issue.
Can't be more relaxed and.
Rested, more lenient.
So the real issue is, and I was listening to a bunch of people talking about legalizing marijuana and the impacts, that's heaven and every, and arguments being used is, if we legalize it, then we can regulate it. And be, it's like heroin, you know? Heroin's used for a lot of things, when you extract pieces out of, for medicinal purposes and it's very tightly controlled. And so we keep tossing around this medical use of marijuana and if it's really a medical use, it is a drug that in, that messes up or interacts with the nervous system, that can have an impact. And we don't really know all the, all the things that are impacted or have effects of it yet, my view. And, and the state, when they set it up, I was involved in another government agency at the time, or a corporation, when they set it up and they're trying to figure out how to handle it. I, I'm just wondering, and I think part of the issue you had was that we had too many plants per household, becomes a commercial grow deal. I don't think the, the state even considered that, if you think about it. So I think people have gotten, is it constitutionally okay to limit that? So I'm hearing that was the right that we can.
The state recognized that that was a problem, so they did.
That's how they got to six?
They gave the statute, they gave the counties and municipalities more authority to regulate them.
Okay.
I believe it was House Bill 171220, but I could be mistaken, don't.
Whatever it is, I just want to make sure we can get it as tight as we can.
It allows us to, to bring it to 12.
Right.
That's, that's the House Bill that allows that.
And then recreational guys are not allowed to go puffing it around where it, it really does get to where kids are or all that kind of thing, or, you know, it's a nuisance.
They're supposed to use it in the public.
Right. And so if we can have 99 plants that are allowed for medical reasons, how do you constrain that? Is there, are we okay?
Say that again?
We're allowing 99 plants per medical distributor. I know the state allows it, but we can't be more restrictive?
No.
Okay.
You cannot, not on, not on a caregiver.
And it's a licensed caregiver that has the right to prescribe marijuana.
Right, so when you're a caregiver, there's a, there's a lot of processes that go through and I would be lying to you if I told you all of them because it is very complex. But the state has a, you know, they have the marijuana regulation, so they, they, in theory, they monitor that and they interact with all of the different caregivers and, and those that are growing legally.
So I'll accept that. One thing that you did say that bothered me a little bit, Shannon, was when you said, well, they're medically licensed and I'm not really going to police them. I think we have to, don't we? And we don't want, because if you give them an inch, they'll take a mile.
True.
And you get it, whatever field it is, as long as they have 99 and no more, no less, they're okay.
Right.
I just kind of worry about that because, you know, before you know it, it's being pushed around as recreational and so they're leaning on that, it's, it's okay for me to give this kid some or whatever.
No, 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 that's, that's not what, that's not what I, what I meant was, is if they're a registered, and I'm just using one example of. they're a registered, uh, and I'm just using one example of, because there's so many, but if, if they're a licensed caregiver, so they're licensed through the state, not the county, it's the state license, they're allowed to have up to ninety-nine points, what I'm, or ninety-nine plants, what I'm saying is, is I'm not going in there inspecting that. Because first.
Who does? Would it be the state?
Yeah, the state.
Send people around?
Right, correct, the state, that's, now, now, if we were to get information or we were to, um, uncover information, that's something different, other than what they're licensed to have or to do is occurring, then that's a different animal, then we do look into that, we, we, we do go after that. But quite frankly, if they're, if they're a licensed caregiver and we stop in and like, hey, you know, how's it going on, we'd like to just look, they're obligated to allow us to go in there and just walk around and look.
Okay.
And quite frankly, if they're not doing anything wrong, they're getting, they actually, and that's what some of these guys were doing, they like to have you come in because they educate you and they teach you about how they do it and how they're following the law because all of those plants are tracked, um, from the seed. The seeds have little RFID type, uh, devices on, that's how the state checks them. And so when that seed's planted in this area, then it, it has a little display there.
Signal?
No, it just has a little display with a little tag on there. So that the state comes in, they can, they can do their little scanner and it shows them that this plant was a derivative of this seed, this seed came from here.
Okay.
And, and that's how it's supposed to work.
Okay, so I got one last question.
It's the state, so.
And one last issue, and that is the voters of Silver Cliff and the voters of the county said we don't want marijuana.
Yep.
And, and West Cliff.
And West Cliff.
And West Cliff.
And so are we allow, are these medical facilities allowed to advertise on our streets and in the county roadways that they?
Because they can't sell it, they can't sell any, anything in the county, all they can do is grow it as a caregiver, they're not, they're not selling it for medical, there's no, in theory, there's no, uh, transfer of goods.
You know, and the reason I ask these questions, because I've had a lot of people on the streets saying, we, we came up here because this is not a county that accepts marijuana.
Right.
And so I just want to be careful because we're gonna, you know, we're, we're showing a lot of plants here and, and we're allowing this thing to happen.
Twelve, so we're done.
Ninety-nine.
It actually.
I know, I know it isn't restrictive, I know. I know that's more restrictive and that's what we want to make sure is clear.
And, and I have the same, I have people coming to me all the time too, most of them want to know where to go buy marijuana, but that's another, but some of them say.
Oh, Jay knows, he knows where it is.
Well, you know, I just always confuse some of that kind of stuff. But anyway, there are people who are very concerned about and I agree with you and I say to them, the towns and the county have all said, no, just flat, no. However, the state legislature said we have to allow some. Please, don't yell at us, go to the state, that's where the issue lies.
Sixty-four, Amendment sixty-four and twenty.
Exactly right.
Changed that, there's.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, if we could make it restrictive, let's do it as much as we can.
And that's what we're doing, that's what we are doing.
I think that's what this is.
So by law, a carded licensed care provider cannot sell their product to their patients.
That's correct, they don't sell.
Did not know that.
Right.
So they, some, one of these.
Somehow they get it.
Gentlemen, oh yeah, you're, you're cheating yourselves out of tax revenue, that is absolutely not the truth. Because there should be no sale of marijuana in this county.
Well, they're, they're advocating that we, it should be legalized, is what, I think that's, I think that was the point they were making, not, not.
They're doing it for free?
This ordinance necessarily, but just the overall.
Yeah, he said, well, we don't want to go to Preblo and buy.
Right.
I don't care what you want, you're not gonna do it here.
Right, that's where they're, that's where they're coming from, that no one can buy it, no one can come over here on Main Street and buy marijuana.
Medical marijuana, you can use medical marijuana as long as you get it for free.
Could I suggest something?
Oh, no, no, no.
You could buy it.
You can buy it, just not here.
Counsel, I'd just start reading.
Well, I can read very softly and you can talk about.
That's a good idea, right? You could have been munging to yourself.
Because it has to be read twice and we've changed it so that first reading on January thirty-one is out the window, I gotta do a first reading again. So if I can just, plus.
And would you like to share the reading?
I can read it out, oh, no, I can read it out loud and I'll read it soft, I mean, but if you all want to talk, it's not gonna bother me.
No, I don't want to.
No. I just, because it's taken.
So is this the second reading then?
This is gonna have to be the first again.
The first and then we're gonna have to read it again.
Yes.
You can be same that day, so.
Yes, it's been changed and I, I'm not comfortable just trying to say this has been changed, this has been changed because it's gotta be published, it has to be published in the form, it's gonna be adopted after the first reading.
And how far does the second reading have to be spaced from the first reading, do you remember?
First one has to be published twice, um, so by the time we get it in the paper next week sometime after reading today, then there's gotta be a fourteen day period so I could read it a second time in Wetmore or.
Fourteen day period, okay.
Yeah.
All right. So, uh.
Go ahead, Ken.
I think, sorry, you gonna say something?
So it's on the agenda that it's gonna be the second reading?
Right, and that's not correct. This is gonna be the first reading of an amended resolution.
Ordinance.
Ordinance, sorry.
Question is, since it says second, could we still do it?
Yeah, that's what my question is, can you still, since it was advertised as a second reading, can you still do it?
Um.
We're gonna be stick with.
We're gonna, you read this thing.
Nobody's ever gonna challenge any of this, we say, heck, let's just adopt these changes and say we read it a second time and nobody would ever know.
Yeah, I agree that we should go through the readings, but I also would support having the first reading today. Now, if that doesn't fly, then we'll postpone it.
Well, I don't see that there's any harm in doing it.
I'm over there, we amend the agenda to change the word second reading to first reading.
And scratch the word adoption?
Adoption, and scratch the word.
Is this to be approval on first reading? Adoption really doesn't occur until the second reading.
Right, that's why we scratched the word adoption.
Did you second that?
Yeah.
It's been moved to second to amend the agenda by scratching the words, second reading and adoption on, and to insert the words, first reading and approval. Discussion, public comment, hearing no proceeded vote on the amendment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Uh, so.
Okay, procedurally, what I would recommend, there was an ordinance number nineteen dash zero one, it was the first reading of it on January thirty-one and it was accepted, actually says adopted on first reading at that time by vote of the county commissioners. Um, what we're doing now, I'm asking formally withdraw that first reading, it'll still be ordinance number nineteen dash zero one, but we'll, if you would withdraw that, uh, and that approval and then let me proceed to a first reading with the same ordinance with the changes.
Withdraw or rescind?
Withdraw.
Uh, it was never approved, so I'd say just withdraw it.
So I'll move we withdraw that, uh, first amendment.
Okay, I'll second it. The amendment second is to withdraw the January thirty-one first reading and approval of the marijuana resolution. Nineteen dash zero one, discussion? Hold on. Motion to withdraw is not debatable, I apologize. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion's been withdrawn.
All right, now if you permission, I'll proceed with the first reading of ordinance number nineteen dash zero one and this is just reading it into the record, you know, if anybody wants to leave or wander around or go out in the hall and visit, you're welcome to do that. Ordinance number nineteen dash zero one, an ordinance, Custer County, a political subdivision of the state of Colorado, regulating residential growing, cultivating and processing of marijuana in the unincorporated areas of said county. Whereas sections fourteen and sixteen of Article eighteen of the Constitution of the State of Colorado, Amendments twenty and sixty-four respectively authorize persons to grow limited amounts of marijuana or to assist others in growing marijuana and whereas Amendment twenty granted to local governments the general authority to prohibit commercial marijuana operations and whereas with the adoption of ordinance number thirteen dash zero one on September five, twenty thirteen by the Board of County Commissioners for Custer County, the Board, commercial marijuana operations were prohibited within the unincorporated areas of Custer County and whereas neither Amendment twenty nor Amendment sixty-four permit local governments to deny individuals a constitutional right to engage in non-commercial unlicensed grow operations and whereas regulations of the state of Colorado pertaining to commercial marijuana operations are generally not directed toward non-commercial unlicensed individual grow operations and whereas this circumstances resulted in a proliferation of nonlicensed and unregulated marijuana grow operations in Custer County that present significant health and public safety concerns with multiple violations of Custer County zoning resolution also violations of electrical, mechanical, plumbing and fire codes that are enforced in unincorporated areas of the county. And whereas section three dash eleven dash one oh two parentheses, two CRS gives the Board the authority to adopt and enforce ordinances regarding health, safety and welfare issues and to provide penalties for the violation of the same and whereas the Board is further authorized pursuant to section twenty-five dash one point five dash one zero six parentheses, thirteen point five CRS to regulate the growing of marijuana commercial or otherwise and whereas the Board is further authorized pursuant to section nine dash seven dash one thirteen CRS to ban the use of compressed flammable gas in the extraction of THC or other cannabinoids in a residential setting and whereas the Board is determined that the adoption of regulations governing the growing, cultivating and processing of marijuana in a residential setting is necessary and desirable for the health, safety and welfare of the citizens of Custer County and whereas this ordinance number nineteen dash zero one does not unreasonably impair or impede the exercise of constitutional rights afforded to citizens under Amendments twenty and sixty-four, now therefore be it ordained by the Board of County Commissioners of Custer County, a political subdivision of the state of Colorado as follows. Part one, section one, scope of ordinance and authority, this ordinance number nineteen dash zero one applies within the unincorporated areas of Custer County and regulates the growing, cultivating and processing of marijuana in a lot parcel or tract of land by any person including but not limited to patients engaging in such conduct for medicinal purposes or persons engaging in such conduct for personal recreational use. Section two definitions, a definition contained in Amendment twenty to the Colorado Constitution, the Colorado Medical Marijuana Code, the Colorado Medical Marijuana Program and any regulations promulgated by the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment and the Colorado Department of Revenue as amended from time to time are incorporated into this ordinance number nineteen dash zero one by reference, including but not limited to definitions of marijuana, medical marijuana, patient and primary caregiver, all other applicable definitions are as stated herein. Subparagraph A, accessory structure means a subordinate structure detached from but located on the same lot, parcel or tract of land as primary residence, use of which is incidental and accessory to that of the primary residence. Subparagraph B, accessory use means a use incidental to and subordinate to the primary residence. Subparagraph C, primary residence means residence where a person by custom and practice makes her, is a her principal domicile and address into which the person intends to return following any temporary absence such as vacation. Excuse me, just a second. Okay, always waiting for a phone call, so.
But you're waiting for applause.
No, no, I just.
You wanna get a drink of water?
Residence is evidenced by average daily physical presence, occupancy and use on a regular basis for domestic purposes such as but not limited to slumber preparation, overtaking meals, regular medical vehicle registration or water and utility billing, a person shall have only one primary residence. Subparagraph D, primary use means the main use of the structure or land as distinguished from accessory use. Section three, growing, cultivating and processing of marijuana, subparagraph A, marijuana may only be grown, cultivated or processed as an accessory use at the primary residence of the person engaging in such activity for such his or her, actually for his or her own consumption and use. Subparagraph B, marijuana may only be grown, cultivated or processed in primary residence or residential, uh, use is the primary use of the structure or an accessory structure to the primary residence on the same property. Subparagraph C, marijuana should not be grown, cultivated or processed in more than one structure on any single lot, parcel or tract of land. Subparagraph E, marijuana should not be grown, cultivated or processed within the common areas of a multifamily or attached residential development. Subparagraph E, any area used for growing, cultivating or processing marijuana shall be fully enclosed and locked, ensuring accessibility only by the person growing, cultivating and processing the marijuana for personal use or for medical use and prevent access by children, visitors casual, passersby or anyone not authorized to possess marijuana. Subparagraph F, any area used for the growing, cultivating and processing of marijuana shall comply with all applicable land use codes, building codes and fire codes, including plumbing, electrical and mechanical regulations and requirements. Subparagraph G, non-residential buildings or structures that are not accessory to primary residence shall not be used for the growing, cultivating and processing of marijuana. Subparagraph H, marijuana should not be grown, cultivated or processed outdoors if not fully contained in an enclosed locked structure. Subparagraph I, medical marijuana shall be governed by CRS twenty-five dash one twenty-five dash one zero six. Section four, marijuana plant limits, at any given time, no more than twelve marijuana plants as defined in Amendment twenty to the Colorado Constitution, may be grown, cultivated or processed in a primary residence or in an accessory structure on a single lot, parcel or tract of land, regardless of how many persons, twenty-one years of age or older may occupy said primary residence. This limitation, which is based on section eighteen dash eighteen dash four oh six parentheses three, parentheses A, parenthesis in Roman numeral two, parentheses capital A, CRS supersedes the statutory provision that grants to each person, twenty-one years of age or older, the right to grow six marijuana plants for personal use and also supersedes the statutory provision that gives, grants to a primary caregiver the right to grow more than twelve plants for his or her patients. Section five, use of compressed flammable gas products and flammable liquids, no compressed flammable gas, for example butane or flammable liquid, may be used in the processing of marijuana for purposes of this section. Flammable liquid means a liquid that has a flash point below one hundred degrees Fahrenheit and includes all forms of alcohol and ethanol. Sub, or, section six, marijuana activity shall not be perceptible. The growing, cultivating and processing of marijuana shall not be perceptible from the exterior of the structure in which such activities occur, including but not limited to, subparagraph A, common visual observation, subparagraph B, light pollution, glare or brightness that disturbs the repose of others, or of another, subparagraph C, undue vehicular or foot traffic, including unusually heavy parking in the immediate vicinity of the primary residence. Section seven, smell or odor, the smell or odor of marijuana growing, being cultivated or being processed at a primary residence or in an accessory structure shall not be detectable by a person with a normal sense of smell from any adjoining lot, parcel, tract of land, public right of way or building unit. Section eight, rental property, any listed tenant, renter or partner, growing, cultivating or processing marijuana shall obtain written, notarized permission from the property owner prior to commencing such use. Part two, section one, administration and enforcement, Custer County Sheriff shall be responsible for the administration and enforcement of this ordinance number nineteen dash zero one. Section two, penalty for violations, any person who violates any provision of this ordinance, number, number nineteen dash zero one, after its effective date commits a class two petty offense pursuant to section thirty dash fifteen dash four oh two, parentheses one, CRS and upon conviction thereof shall be punished by a fine and not more than one thousand dollars for each separate violation plus a surcharge of ten dollars pursuant to section thirty dash fifteen dash four oh two, parentheses two CRS. Each day during which such violations exist shall be deemed a separate offense. Section three, penalty assessment procedure, the penalty assessment procedure set forth in section sixteen dash two dash two oh one CRS shall be followed by law enforcement officers charged with enforcement of this ordinance pursuant to the penalty assessment per fee procedure, the violator may and leave going to court, choose to pay a fine in an amount of one thousand dollars plus a ten dollar surcharge for a violation of any provision of this ordinance. If the penalty assessment procedure is declined by an alleged violator who chooses instead to appear in the county court for Custer County and who is ultimately convicted of a violation of this ordinance in said court, then customary court costs may be assessed in addition to the fine. Section four, disposition of fines, all fines and surcharges assessed for violation of this ordinance shall be paid to the treasurer of Custer County. Section five, additional remedies, the remedies provided in this ordinance shall be cumulative and in addition to any other federal, state or local remedy, criminal or civil, which may be available. Section six, severability, should any section, clause, sentence or part of this ordinance be adjudged by any court of competent jurisdiction to be unconstitutional or invalid, the same shall not affect, impair or invalidate the ordinance as a whole or any part thereof not affect, impair, or invalidate the ordinance as a whole or any part thereof other than the part so declared to be unconstitutional or invalid. Section seven, safety clause of Board of County Commissioners for Custer County hereby fines, determines, and declares that this ordinance number nineteen dash zero one is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public health, welfare, and safety. Section A, effective date in order to preserve the immediate health and safety of the residents and citizens of Custer County, this ordinance number nineteen dash zero one shall take effect immediately upon its adoption on second and final reading as provided in section thirty dash fifteen dash four oh five, CRS. And then it goes on. Introduced, read, and approved on first reading on the twenty-ninth day of March two thousand and nineteen and ordered published in the Wet Mountain Tribune. And in place for the three commissioners to sign and for it to be attested to by the clerk. There's also on the last page the provision for the second reading, but I'm not going to read that at this time.
Eleven minutes and twenty-four seconds.
Good job.
Did you record it so we can just-
It's recording right there. Just read it next time.
No, no, now I want to beat that next time.
You must have used to read those disclaimers at the end of the commercials.
No, I wish I could though, because you can understand what they say even though they go so fast.
Okay, thank you, sir. All in favor, do you have a motion to approve, sorry?
I move that we approve ordinance nineteen oh one as amended for a treat on March twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen.
It's not as amended.
I was going to say, because we're re-reading it now, it's not as amended, correct?
Correct, as first.
We withdrew the first attempt, and now this is-
I'll withdraw my second, and then I'll second. I second the wrong amendment first.
Want me to restate it?
Please.
Okay. I move that we approve ordinance nineteen dash oh one and its first reading on March twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, I'll second.
We've seconded to approve first reading of ordinance nineteen dash zero one. Discussion, public comment, hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion to carry. That first reading has been approved. Thank you, sir.
All right. So I'm not married. Get it to the, to the tribune for them to publish in full again, because this is still the first reading, okay?
From the secondhand store.
Really? I like it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Some good stuff.
So I have an item-
Thank you for your work on that, Mr. Smith. I appreciate it.
Yep. I want to bring up an item under public comment, and that is a discussion of, right now, we have on the schedule for April third, a workshop with the supposedly Dola Economic Development Corporation to talk about the EDA grant status. Kristy Doon cannot be here. I don't know if you just want to leave that on the books, get a report from EDC where we're at?
I think we need her here, personally.
Respectfully. I feel just the opposite.
Okay. I'll listen to you first.
Okay. And I'm happy to go with whatever the consensus is. My feeling is, the real question at this April third meeting is to determine where we stand on this project. Do we, are we going to continue to support it or are we not? And this is the way I'm looking at it only. You may feel differently. I want answers to those questions that we sent to them a couple days ago. And based on those questions, you know, I may, I may have a whole different attitude about this project. And that's an internal thing, and I would prefer Kristy be involved if we make a, if we decide that we're moving forward and we want her money, we should have her come in. But I think the question we're really doing on April thirty, in my opinion only, is, is this a project we're going to continue to support or not?
That's a good point. I'm good with that. However, I worry that they will be using the facts, that here's what we want to do, and we need information whether, they say, well, Kristy says we can do it, we can borrow the money, or whatever.
She said, she already told us she doesn't have a problem.
Here's my perspective, is that I think, I would, I'd feel good if Kristy was there, but I think the point of this meeting was to find out about EDA and where we stand with them. Whether or not we're moving forward or not was not an issue with me. It's where are we with EDA?
You know, is that part of the, is that after the meeting, or what, when is that scheduled? Is that an item?
Two o'clock.
It's a two, right?
April third?
Well, what, not part of the, it's a workshop. What is all this right up here then?
That's today's.
Oh.
So it's a workshop scheduled at two o'clock.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, it's actually supposed to be a meeting.
Yeah, special meeting. So I've got it written down.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so I, I had special meeting written down, sorry. So I emailed Kristy. She said she had a conflict. She said, "I appreciate you keeping me updated on what's going on." She didn't say she thought she had to be here. She didn't ask us to reschedule. It sounded like she was okay with not being here.
So we could make, we could do something.
But the point for me was, this was an EDA status report from the Economic Development Corporation. That's the way I looked at it.
Yeah, okay.
So with, from that perspective, I don't think she needs to be here.
And I'm not sure, me speaking personally again, I'm not sure she even needs to be here at all. She already said to us, "If you make that request, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't do it." She didn't say it's yours. But, so I think what we would do is say, I think the real question to me, for me, is go, no-go. If it's go, let's ask her for the money. If it's no-go, then we need to make some other decision.
Okay, I think that's good. You know, there's things going on in the background. We've got the CenturyLink guys in there. We're going to learn more today. And we've got Silver Cliff and West Cliff want broadband connectivity, want to leverage into it. Those are things that, and I know the EDC or the, what they call Custer County Economic Development Corporation will want to, and I know they're going to all these other meetings too, as far as I know, because they want to defend where they are. I think the more we learn the better. And they help us make a decision on whether we're going to continue with what they're saying.
Yeah, I was just targeting the EDA. So we will leave that on the books, Ms. Meredith? Yep. And then gentleman-
What time is that?
That's two o'clock.
On the second?
On the second, or third, sorry. On the second, there is a workshop, and that's with our insurance pool for the insurance pool loss analysis. That's at one thirty on Tuesday.
What is that, gentlemen? Did you register?
John.
John.
And then I just wanted to publicly mention, and I know you gentlemen are certainly aware of this, that Saturday, April sixth, is the health fair. We're involved in that setup and tear down.
Jay and I are drawing blood this year.
Good. I'm glad I don't have any. I don't have to worry about it.
Excuse me?
I'd like to see you two draw blood.
You do not want to see that.
Okay. I see, I see. We're drawing money. We're past years this year.
That's right, you money grubbers. I got to work, actually. I'm working this year. Not standing around with my hand out, a politician wanting money. Further public comment?
Spring has sprung. The flowers are coming.
Right. Hearing none, let the record show that today's March twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen. At twelve forty-nine, chair declared the meeting adjourned.